Welcome to the Select Board's meeting. It's Tuesday, January 23rd, 2024. Please join the Board in a pledge to the flag.
My pleasure, ladies and gentlemen. To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Canty?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Pursuant to modifications made to the open meeting law by the legislature of the Commonwealth, this meeting is going to take place in a hybrid format. Members of the Board may join us physically here at the Great Hall at Town Hall, or virtually over the Zoom webinar platform. Members of the public who wish to attend this meeting may do so by joining us here physically at the Great Hall at Town Hall, or by joining us via the Zoom webinar platform. They may do so for the purposes of observing the meeting, or participating in it. People may also watch the meeting on television on Comcast Channel 9, or Verizon Channel 47.
Thank you. You want to be the executive session? Or you want me?
Sure. The Select Board will hold an executive session pursuant to Massachusetts General Law's Chapter 30A, Section 21A, Clause 6, to consider the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property if the Chair declares that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the negotiation position of the public body. The location in question is 22 Mary B. Lane. And, Mr. Chairman, at this time, I would make a motion that we enter into executive session for the purposes that I've just read out.
I'll second. Motion by Mr. Canty, second by Mr. Helm. Mr. Helm?
Yes.
Mr. Canty?
Yes.
Mr. Blitzer?
Yes.
And myself, yes. We'll be returning, the Board will be returning approximately 6:30. Thank you. At this time, I'd like to turn it over to the Chief. Welcome.
Good evening. Dana Flynn, Chief of Police. I have the great pleasure tonight to introduce the two newest police officers for the town of Plymouth, Officer Nicholas Hunt and Connor Smith. They're going to be sworn in tonight by Clerk McElworth. Nicholas Hunt, he's a transfer from the Dennis Police Department. Spent six years in the Army National Guard as a military police officer with the 72nd MP Company out of Redding, Mass., while attending Bridgewater State University. He graduated in 2021 with a BS in Criminal Justice. Connor Smith graduated last week from the Plymouth Police Academy. He was born and raised in Plymouth, graduated Plymouth South High School in 2019, and from Fritschburg State University in 2023 with a bachelor's degree in Criminal Justice.
Officers, if you could raise your right hand and repeat after me. Aye, state your name.
Aye, Congressman Hunt.
Do solemnly swear
Do solemnly swear.
That I will bear true faith
That I will bear true faith.
And allegiance to
And allegiance to.
And will uphold
And will uphold.
And defend the Constitution of the United States of America
And defend the Constitution of the United States of America.
And the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts
And the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
And that I will fairly
And that I will fairly
inequitably
inequitably
execute the laws thereof
Execute the laws of law
within the extent of my authority and jurisdiction
Within the extent of my authority and jurisdiction.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Aye, state your name.
Aye, Congressman Hunt.
Do solemnly swear
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully and impartially
That I will faithfully and impartially
discharge and perform
Discharge and perform.
All the duties incumbent upon me
And all the duties incumbent upon me
as a police officer of the Town of Plymouth Police Department.
As a police officer of the Town of Plymouth Police Department.
And I will obey
And I will obey.
And be bound
And be bound.
By such rules and regulations
By such rules and regulations.
As now are
As now are.
Or may be
Or may be.
From time to time
From time to time.
Established for the government
Established for the government.
Of the Town of Plymouth
Of the Town of Plymouth.
Police Department
Police Department.
So help me God.
So help me God.
One last paragraph. Aye, state your name.
Aye, Congressman Hunt.
Hereby accept
Hereby accept.
The position of police officer
The position of police officer.
In and for the Town of Plymouth
In and for the Town of Plymouth.
Police Department of the Town of Plymouth.
Police Department of the Town of Plymouth.
Congratulations.
If I could have those who are going to pin their officers approach and pin the officers. Congratulations.
Teach us. Center face. Forward march.
That concludes the ceremony. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Moving on to the licenses and administrative notes. We can take them all, or we can take them as the Board feels fit. How does the Board wish to do it?
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion, unless there are questions, to approve the two licenses as a group?
Second. Motion by Mr. Canty, second by Mr. Blitzer. Discussion. Mr. Blitzer?
I vote yes.
Mr. Helm?
Yes.
Mr. Canty?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Unanimous. Moving on, administrative notes, there's 10 of them. Mr. Canty?
Mr. Chairman, unless there are questions, I would make a motion that we approve the 10 administrative notes as a group.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Canty, second by Mr. Helm. Discussion. Seeing none. Mr. Blitzer?
I vote yes.
Mr. Helm?
Yes.
Mr. Canty?
Yes.
And myself, yes. And I'm just checking, there's no John, right? Moving on to Article 16A.
Good evening. Bill Cohen with the Community Preservation Committee. I didn't know if you wanted to entertain this, but 16D is an article coming out of the Office of Marine Environmental Affairs. I know they have a busy schedule, and I didn't know if you wanted to hear that one first.
No.
Nope?
Okay. I'm only kidding.
All right, so I'll go right over to 16.
That's fine. No, Bill. We'll listen to him. Is the harbor master here? He was here.
He was.
He was over there.
Yeah, David's right here. So I will, I'll advance the presentation to 16D, but before I start the presentation, Lynne supplied you with a memo. I think some extra material came in tonight on your desk, and this is a memo from Lynn Barrett outlining the funding sources. Lynn?
Yep, CPC, the revenues.
Yeah, so overall, just to recap sort of all the articles that are being presented to you tonight, three of which you voted under admin notes, but the materials had been given to you prior to this, so that you had that. But the memo from me is just the recommendation on the funding sources for each of these projects. 16A, we're recommending to borrow. 16B, we're recommending to borrow. 16C, we're recommending to use a combination of annual revenues and existing reserves. 16D, we're recommending to borrow. 16E is a combination of, is actually a reduction in borrowing, and that's going to be using estimated annual revenues for next year. Same thing with 16F, using estimated revenues. And then their account budget and debt service budget, we're also using estimated revenues.
Thank you, Lynn.
Thank you, Lynn. So we'll jump ahead here to 16D. I'm jumping ahead, right? See how that works? Okay, 16D. Apologize for that E being there. It should be a D. So if you turn to your briefing books, I'll just give you some quick education that the first page, you have an index page on green that tells you what page. So we're now on page 77 of your briefing book, and this is a recommendation by the Community Preservation Committee to Town Meeting for the expenditure of $3 million. This application came from us, from the Plymouth Department of Marine Environmental Affairs. This request is really a culmination of nearly 25 years of work along our town brook. We have been strategically buying up pieces of land, acquiring dams, taking dams down, writing grants, removing these obstructions from the waterways. This effort has led to a revitalization of one of Plymouth's most valued environmental resources downtown, and that's our town brook. The town brook is one of the largest freshwater contributors to Plymouth Harbor, which is vital to our economic future here in Plymouth in terms of the businesses and our seasonal activity. This application will be coming in after all of that work and improving the trails from Brewster Gardens up to the Jenny Pond Footbridge, lighting, ADA compliance. There's areas of this path that way that hasn't been restored for nearly 50, 60 years since the urban renewal efforts of the 1960s and 70s. This pathway or trail system from our waterfront up into Jenny Pond hasn't been updated. We're moving to make it ADA compliant and improve its lighting. I have here tonight David Gould from the Department of Marine Environmental Affairs. He can kind of walk you through this process. One of the features of this is not only improving these trails and combining it with previous articles, improving dredging and lighting, but improving the footbridge and the ADA compliance, but also creating a herring one bypass at the last remaining inhibitor to migrating fish in the spring. The spring fish or the herring that bypass that come up through our town brook have to go up a fish ladder, which is kind of like running the gauntlet with the seagulls, and it's not very productive. So Dave has been working on this idea of getting the migrating fish through this location in a more productive way. So if David wants to change his screen, he can kind of walk you through some of the photographs detailing what I just outlined in terms of the scope of this article, in terms of renovating this location in our waterfront and our downtown. And as I said before, this application is nearly, it's a cul-de-sac, it's a result of nearly 25 years of work along our town brook, spearheaded by the Office of Marine Environmental Affairs. The CPA has been standing by, funding numerous acquisitions over the years through Town Meeting. Here's Dave.
Thank you, everybody. So as Bill mentioned, this is a request that we put forth to the Community Preservation Committee. And just a little bit of context, it's part of a larger scope for a lot of work that you all know has been done and has been going on around Jenny, and some of those will include the dredging of the pond, the bypass channels, some dam repairs that we need to do to the structure, as well as recent improvements in the parking lot and the lighting that's going to be getting ready to be turned on very soon. As most of you know, in 2019, in 2020, we redid Holmes Playground and a lot of the work on Newfield Street. Those paths and sidewalks all the way down to Willard Place are all ADA compliant now. When the parking lot was redone in Jenny in 2019, the park and the parking lot and the sidewalks were also ADA compliant. What connects the two is the Jenny Pond Footbridge, which is not compliant, circa 1970 construction. And one of the requests we have tonight is to do replacement of that structure so that we can make not only the footbridge ADA compliant, but connect Holmes, Newfield Street, Willard Place into Jenny, and then downstream to Brewster Gardens, all ADA compliant. So this is kind of what we're looking at in terms of full scope up here, is the basketball court for Holmes. And so you come down to Willard Place, which is a small cul-de-sac over the footbridge at Jenny, and this green line would bring you all the way down into Brewster Gardens. So that's the extent and the scope of what we're looking for here. And essentially, the project and the funding that we request are for two main components, and I'll go through that quickly as well. Just so you can see some of the existing conditions, this is the existing footbridge at Jenny. You can see some of the grade issues. So not only do we need to replace footbridge, we need to do some sidewalk pathwork. This walkway on the other side of Willard Place goes down to a steep grade and then comes up very quickly. So the bridge would be higher, all in one span with no piles in the middle, and we'd be able to connect the sidewalks that would bring it up to ADA compliance. Those paths from Jenny Griss Mill to Brewster Gardens, as you know, go onto two different bridges, Market Street and Main Street Extension. Those bridges and walkways are very low, so we would be raising them up, get them out of the water, and then address issues like the repairs that you see here that need to be made. So you would have a new walkway that'd be elevated, that would be ADA width, that would also have a railing associated with it, and it would be higher in elevation. So when we get significant rainfall events or flooding in this area, the path would remain dry and accessible. The other concern we have with some of the drainage issues along the path are that they ice up. So this time of year, you'll see that you have that water going over the path, and then it's very icy, and then, of course, it's treacherous to walk. And I think everyone here knows that these paths get a significant amount of use by residents, but also tourists, and so they can be quite dangerous when they freeze over. So we'd be doing a fair amount of drainage work to improve it. In fact, in this section here, I'll show a slide later on that shows this walkway actually elevated, so that all the drainage would actually go under it, so it would remain dry at all times and would not ice over. The other issue is some of this is supported by stone walls, and you can see in this photo some of those walls, especially where they approach the concrete walkways underneath the bridges, are starting to fall apart. So we've got some issues there that we want to address and fix up, as well as replace some of that conduit where some of the electrical wiring goes. We would also take that existing railing and make it ADA compliant. We mount it to the side, which gains us another about four inches of width as well. So there'd be some significant upgrades throughout areas like this that you're seeing. This is another site underneath one of the bridges where you actually have some sinkholes. So obviously, small child, animal, pet could get foot caught in here. We want to address those situations and resolve those once and for all. So one of the things we're looking to do is really focus on two main components, the footbridge and then the path beyond where our bypass project will be. When our bypass project ends, what we hope to do is receive this funding so we don't go from brand-new sidewalks to the existing sidewalks in the conditions I just showed. So we would have this great project, and then it would just abruptly end, and you would have sidewalks and walkways in the conditions that you just saw. So we're looking to improve that. So we've done a lot of landscape design work. These are some of the elements for railings that we're looking at in specific overlook locations. This is a re-divined path. This is going from behind the Griss Mill up to Market Street with a path that is now ADA compliant. And these would be walkways that would be well landscaped in this area. We would remove one tree, so much of the landscaping that's already there would remain. It would just be improved drainage and additional plantings and landscaping to improve the aesthetics of the area. And down at the bottom, you can see some of the shots of what we'd be looking to do in terms of granite benches and stonework, oftentimes matching what's out there, but just enhancing the overall look of the site. This is the area that I just mentioned that would be slightly elevated. So if you're between the two bridges, between Market Street and the Main Street Extension, there are three small rivulets that come out over the path. This would be a path that would be slightly elevated, so all that water goes underneath it. It'd actually be precast concrete to look like a boardwalk, so it'd actually look like you were walking over wood, a slight elevated boardwalk, but it would remain dry and safe and not freeze over in the wintertime. And then, of course, some of the drainage improvements that I mentioned as well, because we want to get rid of those dangerous ice spots in the wintertime. So some of the challenges that we've done with this project, if you recall, back in 2019 for the footbridge, we actually received Park Grant money. We had repeated delays in getting a Town Meeting done, and by the time we had Town Meeting finally happen due to COVID, we did not have enough time to do contracts and put the project out to bid and construct it. So we had to return the grant money. We then, in 2020, wrote the grant again, received the money again, and then post-COVID, put it out to bid, and it came in 35% over the budget. We then had to return the money a second time. So this time, we're just trying to get this funding in place and get this footbridge done once and for all. And of course, we're always still seeking additional funds. So we have several grants out right now, some for dredging and a $10 million request in for NOAA to do the entire bypass channel. And that bypass channel is obviously for fish passage, but it also meets dam safety requirements for increased passage of storm flows over the dam structure, and it also has improvements for water mains, sewer, sidewalk, and a bunch of other amenities associated with the construction of the bypass. So again, what we'd be looking for, this $3 million, is approximately 1.3 for the footbridge, 1.6 million for the rest of the trail work. And again, as I mentioned, there's the NOAA funding that's pending, as well as the state grant that we're putting in for the dredging work of Jenny Pond. So we are trying to secure several grants to offset costs, and any time we request CPC money, we're obviously looking to bring in as much money as possible to leverage what money we could potentially be getting from CPC. So that's the summary of the overall project, so you know what we're looking to do and what we're looking to propose. And if you have any questions, I will try to answer them.
Thank you, David. Any questions for Mr. Gould? Mr. Mahoney?
David, as Bill had said earlier, this is the culmination of over 20 years of consistent hard work on behalf of, you know, Town Meeting, the Select Board, FinCom, and yourself and other department heads. So we're looking at this here basically, it's almost like the final link, connecting Brewster Gardens with modern infrastructure up to, you know, above the cul-de-sac at the end of Willard, and we're going to bring it all together. So, or you are. In a perfect world, if all the federal funding comes in and everything falls into place, what's the timing, especially for the dredging of that body of water?
So we should be hearing about the NOAA request sometime in February. If that is the case, and we're successful receiving that money, and I think we have a very good chance of doing so, the goal would be to dredge in the winter of '24, '25, do the footbridge in a similar timeframe, and then do the bypass the year after. The reason we would do the dredging first is we really want to remove as much sediment as possible, so that the invert elevation of the new culvert for the bypass is lower than the sediment issue, and we don't have any downstream migration of sediment. So again, we would dredge this coming winter, a year from now, and then two years, we would do the bypass and the dam repairs.
All right, so I'm not an expert in this, but I look at the dredging, and the new bridge is minimally disruptive to the community. Once you get onto that next phase, the bypass channel and, you know, the modern sidewalks all the way down to Brewster, is that something you do spring, summer? Is that fall, winter? What's the approach on that?
So we're typically restricted to working fall, winter, and early spring, or late winter, if you want to call it that, for any in-stream work. So we're not allowed to do any work basically from March 1st to June 15th for anything that would be silk-producing work because of the fish migration in the spring. So we're often doing this fall and winter, and that's when we've done all of our other dam removals, fish ladders, all of that work. So dredging would be in the fall and winter. The bypass work would be in fall and winter. We would do landscaping after that, because that wouldn't be silk-producing work. So the difficulty is it's winter work. The advantage is typically those are times when we don't have a lot of tourists around, and people aren't typically as out and about as much. So there's advantages to doing winter work. So most of what you're seeing would happen in the fall and winter.
Thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Gould? Seeing none. Thank you. Good job, David.
Thank you. Thank you. I'll put it back on.
Okay. I'll move approval of that article.
Second. Motion by Mr. Mahoney, second by Mr. Canty. Discussion. Mr. Blitzer?
I vote yes.
Mr. Helm?
Yes.
Mr. Canty?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Unanimous. Mr. Cohen, welcome.
Yep, so if you hit the PowerPoint for the CPA, right there to the right, there you got it, right there. As Ginny sets this up, when you look at this project along our town brook, it really dates back to almost 100 years during the tricentennial in 1920. There was a lot of effort to remove some of the obstructions along our town brook and create Brewster Gardens. So each generation has an opportunity to do something along this location, and we're glad that you're supporting Article 16A. The next article is 16, excuse me, 16D. The next article is 16A on page one of your briefing material. This is a recommendation by the Community Preservation Committee for affordable housing. The next three articles that you're going to see are based on affordable housing. The community has been concerned about the commitment the town is making for affordable housing. I think tonight is a very interesting evening. This is one of the largest contributions in a single evening for affordable housing in the history of the CPA in Plymouth. So it's a significant commitment over a period of time. Article 16A, as I said, is affordable housing. The applicant is the Plymouth Area Coalition at $3 million. This would be a grant to renovate a building that they acquired on 54 Industrial Road. This is, the building will be renovated into 26 affordable housing units for families. It's a family complex. Part of this, the Plymouth Area Coalition will provide onsite supportive programming to the residents of the complex in the form of education. There'll be educational services that are provided in the building. So not only will people be living in this complex, but they'll also be going to a classroom setting where they'll be learning some of the life skills necessary to strengthen some of the activities the family has to embrace to be self-sustainable, such as looking for housing through different federal and state opportunities, or local housing, working with other activities associated with maintaining leases or looking for work. So the Plymouth Area Coalition for the homeless does a lot of work with families. They've been doing this since 1983 here in Plymouth, and this is the next step, the next logical step, is to find a facility that allows them to do this one-stop shopping where people can temporarily live in this location, take the classes that are provided by the Plymouth Area Coalition. Like I said before, this building will have someone on duty during the day, and there'll be overnight security staff along with the classes that are offered. The building will be constructed, renovated in a deed restriction, will be placed on the building, and the zoning has been approved by the town. Some of the material that you see in your briefing book shows some of the engineering plans that have been approved by the town since November. plans that have been approved by the town since November. The town has approved their permits. Their permits are outlined under the Dover Amendment. This allows a use of this location due to the Dover Amendment that allows this activity to take place where there are people being housed and classes are being offered in the form of educational services. And one of the other things that is relevant to this location, and why it's a nice match for the services provided by the Plymouth Area Coalition, is that it's close to public transportation. There's direct local service on Industrial Parkway, excuse me, Industrial Road, and there's also close to the train service along the South Shore into Boston. And there are community services that are available that are close in proximity to this location. So obviously, that is a benefit not only to the town, but also to the inhabitants of the complex. Tonight, I have here the Director of the Plymouth Area Coalition, Sue Juvenetti. She can walk you through the organization, who they are, and what they do. But as we look, this is 54 Industrial Road. It is, will be renovated. There'll be a dorma placed on the front, but mostly, the front will remain the same. Again, this is a side view. The lower level is the education center, where people will be entering and coming from, so where you live and where you go to the classes are separate. Here's kind of a layout of the the suites that would be provided for families. As you can see, it's very efficient. There is a space for the family, but also shared individual bathrooms. There's also a shared kitchen and eating facility. You can see that down on the lower level, where the classrooms are, where the services are located. In this area, these are the classrooms setting, and this is the cafeteria area in the shared eating facility. Again, this is the entrance to the educational center that is, again, staffed at all times when it's operational. Like I said, for the living section, you'll see, this is the front door, again, staffed, where people can be greeted at that at that location. So I'd like to allow Sue to go over some of the details of our organization, where they are in this process, and how they were able to acquire the building and the zoning. Sue?
Thank you, Bill. Thank you very much. I think Bill gave you a great overview of of this particular project. The coalition's been in existence since the mid-'80s, and since that time, we have addressed providing temporary shelter and housing for homeless families throughout our community and the greater South Shore. We service 22 communities. We operate our EA program through a contract with the State of Massachusetts. The Commonwealth really is the one that has developed this framework. We've certainly put our own enhancement on that, but we do, in fact, operate according to the stipulations of the Commonwealth's contract. So in addition to the EA program, we do, the coalition, that is, has several other programs. We have a large food pantry program, again, serving 22 South Shore communities. We have what we call a FAIR program, which provides basic needs in the form of clothing or household items, furniture. We have a 24/7 helpline that we, is manned by an individual. It's, there's never an answering machine. Anyone in need of direction or services throughout the day is able to speak with an individual and get some guidance as to where they can, in fact, if it's not a service we can provide, where they can find their support. And we do the Children's Holiday Fund, which we had the opportunity to take over probably about 12 to 15 years ago, and and that certainly is a longtime Plymouth tradition. But the core and the heart of everything we do is really the EA program. When we first started, we had sites in Manimate. We were on Court Street in, between North Plymouth and downtown. And in 1989, we had the opportunity to be the recipient of a, some property out on Route 80 in Kingston. And so since that time, we've been operating a family program at that site. That site has 13 units. What we knew very well was that that wasn't enough to service the homeless families throughout our area. Unfortunately, there's far too much need, and so it's been an ongoing task to be looking for properties or or buildings that we could, in fact, then expand our program. And so it's been, it's been ongoing with the support of our board. We've really searched high and low to find property that would would check all the boxes, that would be supportive for families that are experiencing homelessness. So what, I think the important thing to remember with with our program is that it is, in fact, temporary. The goal is, when a family comes into shelter, we do everything we can to provide them with the guidance, the education, and the tools to then become self-sustainable. So we've been very successful at it. Certainly, long before I arrived on the scene, the coalition has had a tradition of addressing these needs and doing it well. We have the full support of the Commonwealth on this, and the executive, what used to be DHCD, and now the Executive Office of Housing and Living Conditions, they're fully supporting us in our efforts. We, right now, we are housing 109, 109 units we have, so probably are somewhere over 400 individuals that we're assisting at this time, and and in a very thoughtful and compassionate way. And that's been the driver in everything that has led the coalition in their work from the beginning. We have expectations. There are rules, there are guidelines, but everything that is done, and I think sets us apart, is that we we really work hard to be compassionate, really work toward making opportunity for housing and a strong future for families equitable. So that's who we are, that's what we do. This really has been a long-term dream for us. It's, it's, as Bill said, it checks all the boxes. It's right smack in an area where there's lots of job opportunity. The GATRA bus goes by the front of the building. The the bus terminal is right down the street. The the train is close by. There are all kinds of retail resources, as well as medical facilities. We've had many different businesses that have approached us and shown their support for it. I think we couldn't be happier. I think that it's important to recognize that these are, this is not meant to be, it's temporary, and that's why, when you look and you see these units with a couple of sets of bunk beds and, you know, it's not meant to be elaborate by any means. We're there to get a job done, to support families, and help them develop the future and and prosperity that we experience. So hopefully, I touched the areas that provide you the information you need. But I will say, too, I also have, our attorney is here, Adam Baransky, who can address any issues or or questions around the Dover Amendment, as well as Emily Rothschild, who's right behind me, and Emily's been our project counsel and has tremendous experience in these type of projects for many, many years. So we're happy to entertain any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Sue. Mr. Mahoney, then Mr. Canty, and then Mr. Blitzer and Mr. Helm.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So you're saying that this location checks all the boxes, and the search for this location has been how long?
For me personally, I'd say I've been at the coalition going on seven years, I, just about seven years. I would say six years.
Okay, so I'm going to have some of the same questions I'm going to pose to you, unless my colleagues beat me to them, will also be posed to Mr. Gorsick. The other one, Mr. Vayle, will get off lightly tonight. So having said that, you're applying to the state for funding, okay? How important is it for you to have a local commitment prior to putting in that application?
Ideally, we have a commitment of local funding prior to applying to the state. However, we have already applied to the state. We have once-a-year funding rounds for supportive housing, and we were urged to apply in December, because there is such a tremendous need for these programs. The expectation from the state is that there is local match or local contribution for these projects. We've informed them that we've applied and that it would be, the earliest we would know something would be town meeting in the spring, assuming that the selectmen recommend the project to move forward, and FinCon recommends it. So we're in process.
And if no local commitment is made, it's highly probable that your application would be put on the shelf for another year.
That would be typical, and I don't know, given, you know, what we're seeing in the newspaper and the urgency, I don't know how they would handle it.
Okay.
But yes, typically, in in my 30 years of experience, they they would say, we need a local match.
Okay, last question. And the committee for the 20 years of its existence is always doing a wonderful job, working in conjunction with the Finance Department, being able to exhibit multitasking financially and never handicapping any future opportunities by overreaching in the present or the past. So again, one of the reasons I supported this proposal was that you didn't need any funding until FY '26.
Yep.
So that we can stagger these in.
Yep.
Okay, and that's still the case, correct?
Yeah, we can use, we can draw on the state funding first. We are not structuring this with any conventional financing, but we can draw on the state funding up to, they have a, there are two sources that we would likely be funded with. One of them has a 10% holdback, and one of them has a 5% holdback, but the majority of their funds can be dispersed first. The largest amount of construction cost is typically, goes towards the end of the project, so our monthly requisitions are lighter for our first, you know, four, four months or so, four or five months. So yeah, we can, we can draw the maximum of the state and then go to the CPC funds if they're awarded.
Thank you.
Mr. Canty?
Thank you. So I have a couple of questions. Before I ask them, I would say I'm certainly in favor of Plymouth having a shelter. I think that there's definitely a need here. I know from my day job that there's definitely a demand in southeastern Plymouth County. There's some good representation for shelters up in north, northwestern Plymouth County, but not as much down here. So there's definitely a need for more infrastructure here. But my concern with the funding source here is the use of affordable housing funds, because it is a shelter, not a place that is being rented or sold to someone meeting certain income requirements. And the guidelines for affordable housing require income to be verified, and obviously, people that need shelter are often in a position where they're looking to be housed, even in a temporary shelter, with some level of urgency. So how, first, I guess, how does this qualify as affordable housing, if it's a homeless shelter versus what is intended to be a permanent housing solution for an individual until they choose to leave? And secondly, how will compliance with the deed restriction be implemented when housing people in dire need of temporary housing assistance, so that there's no violation of the restriction that you're signing up for?
I can take a portion of that. And so this is an example of what we did in North Plymouth with the Task Force for the Homeless. We acquired buildings, we deed restrict them. The eligibility of the Community Preservation Act allows for that. As long as we get the deed restriction on the building, that it's deemed affordable in the future and its future conveyance, they have to, you know, runs with the title of the land, we meet the obligation under the Community Preservation Act. So we've done this before around Plymouth at different locations. There was two different buildings in North Plymouth that we acquired under similar circumstances, where the income verification, obviously, was left to the operators of the facility. So there is a process at that location where Father Bill is processing people into the unit, and they are confirming and trying to find logistically what income they might have, which is extremely limited. So I know that's how we've done it in the past with organizations that house people in this, in this, in this manner, where it is, at that location, it is temporary, it's congregate living, so people are coming and staying for a shorter period of time before we can move to more traditional housing, where the stipulations for those complexes fall under those guidelines. But is there anything else that you'd like to add on?
Just a couple of things. One is that family shelter operates very differently from single adult shelter, so you can't just walk in and say, I need a place tonight, here I am. Whereas at a single adult shelter, there is no income verification. You walk in, they'll give you a bed or a mat on the floor if they can't give you a bed. So people do have to be income verified through the Department Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities. They have to be eligible for what was formerly called welfare. They have to be eligible to a certain income level. So we have income documentation, first of all. The state funding is also funding that's meant for housing. So the state funding that we would receive, one of the sources has a 30-year use restriction, the other one has a 50-year use restriction that would be recorded on the property. The, one last thing about family shelter is that while it's temporary, unfortunately, typically, people do stay for about a year. So it really looks and quacks like transitional housing. And and people are, you know, there are few people who are able to get out within a couple of months. It's not that they have to stay for a year, but it's much more common that people are there for a year, because it's so difficult to find affordable housing. So hopefully, that answers your questions.
I think it does. As a follow-up, and this is probably for Bill, would this, would using affordable housing funds for this temporary shelter, and I understand temporary could mean up to a year, would these housing units count towards the town's 10% to get into safe harbor for avoiding 40Bs and choosing our own destiny? Or?
I'd have to confirm with Town Council on their interpretation of how many units will be credited towards that count. So this would be counted? How many units, the 26, we would have to confirm?
They might only count some of the units?
Again, I, you know, it appears that, from my understanding, there'll be a count of 26, but I would defer to Town Council on their, on their opinion on that.
Has Town Council reviewed this article to make sure that it complies with the provisions of the Community Preservation Act?
The documents that we supplied you, we supplied Town Council.
Thank you.
But we'll, we'll do a little bit more confirmation and research into the exact form that this restriction would have to take to get the count.
Joe?
I have a couple of questions, but something that you've... Something that you said, Bill, can you step up again? You said that this could turn into affordable housing if the shelter, you know, if the shelter, say the shelter closed, it could be affordable housing. But is, I think you said that, and I know in the, in that industrial park... And I know in the, in that industrial park, residential is not allowed. And the only reason why this project will be able to work in there is because of the Dover Act. And the Dover Act is for educational, which, which there is an educational piece to this. But that can't revert back into affordable housing because it's not allowed in that, in that industrial park. It's not, it's not zoned in there.
Let me, let me defer to the attorney on the Dover Amendment on that part of your question.
No, no. You said if, if this, if it's deeded, that it can revert to affordable housing if, basically, if the shelter didn't work.
Yeah, the question about the conveyance, future conveyance, they would have to adhere to the stipulations that we have with the, the property would have to continue to be used that way to be compliant. So it's affordable, but it would have to be maintained the way that it's designed to today.
But if the shelter closed, you'd have to sell it or?
It only could be sold for that purpose because of the restriction at the registry.
But you can't do, you can't do residential housing in that zone.
Yeah, whoever acquires the property would be required to use it as it is filed with the registry.
So while I'm on that subject, and by the way, I'm in support of this. I know there's people out there that I respect that are against it. And one of the pieces is that why are we putting residential in an area where we should be, there should be economic development? Because that's what the industrial park was created, for economic development. And being a pro economic development guy myself, I had questions until the town manager told me about the Dover Act. And I understand that. And I, and I, and I know that we need this type of shelter. We need to help these families get jobs, get permanent housing. And again, I forgot your name, but she brought up that this isn't, this isn't like the churches. These aren't people that are gonna show up and then leave in the morning and come back to eat lunch. That's, these are families that are gonna be staying there. The kids are gonna get educated. The, the parents are gonna be educated on, on jobs. They're gonna get, you know, job fairs and they're gonna be taught skills. And so I get that. But I also see the negatives. We're taking a property off the tax rolls. And, you know, in Plymouth, everything is about taxes. That's all you hear about today, about we need more tax revenues, commercial tax revenues, and who offsets real estate taxes. So I'm, because of the Dover Act, I don't think we can stop this. And, and I'm looking at all the positives that's gonna come out of this. So I think we have to embrace this and make this work. And so that's why I will be voting for it. But I see the other side, you know, I've heard that there's no, that the families are not gonna have, there's no public transportation. You pointed out that there is the gap for bus, it does, it does go downtown. There are some other negatives I heard that I don't want to even repeat because I just, I was kind of, I was kind of disappointed at a couple of things I heard. So anyway, I'm for this, I will be voting for it. Is it the most ideal place for me? No, it's not. I would like to see, I would like to see commercial development in that area. But I understand that.
It's a, it's a valid point in terms of the industrial park was designed for this purpose. That was nearly 60 years ago. Times have changed. We're entering into a master planning process and we might start looking at the planning process as it relates to zoning and housing, kind of a mom and pop operation type of things where we're more open to.
But I still see, I see residential over at Colony Place, where there should be commercial space. I see Home Depot, the new town at Home Depot, that should be commercial space. I see Cottage Park, another town created down there that should be commercial revenue. We're losing all the, you know what we need to do, and it's something we're working on, is we need to find some more areas that we can zone light industrial so we can get some more commercial development in other parts of our town. So, but I am gonna support this. Thank you.
Yeah, and I, and I think it's important to note too, that out of the industrial park, we have three charter schools. This is something that's been happening. And now that we have a master planning underway, we should be revisiting those questions that you have in terms of the 21st century and how we approach housing in commercial areas and zoning and being more efficient in, in terms of how we move people around from where they live and they work. This idea of driving 30, 40 miles to work now is not sustainable. And this idea of mixing the usages in a way, this is just dealing with an emergency situation in, in an educational opportunity to get people back to a self-sustainable situation. But it is a growing trend. And, and your comments, you know, are well taken by our committee and hopefully the new master plan committee. I would defer just briefly to the attorney on the Dover Amendment.
Thanks, Bill. Yeah, so as my understanding, there might be some questions. It sounds like the board is relatively well-versed in this. But, and again, while it's important to reiterate that, you know, the, the idea of land use is not, respectively, this board's purview and it's not on, on the agenda to be voted on today, we would like to confirm that the proposed use is one that's allowed by right under, under the Dover Amendment. And while it's one thing for, for an attorney to, to come up here, and actually, I don't think I introduce myself, Adam Barnoski, 255 State Street in Boston. It's one thing for an attorney to come up here and tell you that it's allowed as a use under the Dover Amendment. Your own town has already independently commented on this. There is a letter from your zoning code enforcement officer from November 1, 2023, that simply says that this is an approved, allowed use for a homeless shelter and educational facility with 26 units. I would suggest that the, if there are any questions specifically about how, how that was determined, that the Select Board could communicate directly with the zoning enforcement officer. But what I anticipate is that this is a permissive use that's allowed under Dover Amendment, which provides it certain exemptions from local zoning regulations for educational and religious uses. The amendment allows nonprofit organizations to use land and build structures for educational or religious purposes without being subject to underlying local zoning. There is a significant amount of case law on this issue, particularly as it pertains to homeless shelters that have an educational component to it here. The, the applicant is seeking to have education be a, an ancillary use and a significant use as part of its, its operation. So I don't wanna lend too much, you know, credence to this issue, but did wanna come before you and with a clear confirmation that this is an allowed use under Dover. Happy to answer any questions and specific questions you have on this issue. Thanks.
Mr. Helm? I actually do have a question for you.
Sure.
So it's convenient that you're standing there. In the deed restriction that will be filed, do you have any of the language pertaining specifically to the affordability of the units? What kind of language is gonna be used? Because I see that in the proposal, the proposed units are defined as family shelter units. And I know that that is different language than affordable housing deed restriction. So what is the deed restriction going to be?
You know, I'm less familiar with the deed restriction language. Perhaps one of my colleagues knows? So again, I would, like I said, I'd probably at this point defer to Town Council how they want that language to be written in terms of what it will be deeded, you know, for use as affordable housing. And some of those, you know, that would be my recommendation at this point is to defer to Town Council on what language they would like to see and what mass.
You don't have an answer to my question?
No, I'd seek that from Town Council.
That's fine. Not having an answer is fine, too. I wanna go back to Mr. Canty's question. I felt that you were equivocating. You were, you were not, will a certain number of these units, even if it is not all 26, will they apply to our 40B?
We will get, yeah, yeah. So we will get, we will get, we will get recognition in that count. How much that count will? Like I said before, we, I defer to Town Council to determine how many units will get counted. Town Council probably would hardly engage mass housing in, in terms of the, the language of the restriction and how we get the count.
But you, you are assuring all residents here and watching and concerned and town meeting members that some of these units will apply towards our 40B levels?
At least one.
At least one?
Yes, the, the complex itself, yes.
So it, it could be, you will commit to one of them?
Right now, without, without Town Council reviewing it and determining through mass housing what the count, what the language might be, I would defer to them on this, yes.
Okay, will, will you, since you are deferring to Town Council on my two questions, do you commit to have the answer to those two questions in time for town meeting and the caucuses?
Yeah, yes, yeah. I'll be on the phone tomorrow getting those answers.
Okay.
For sure.
And will you update the Select Board on those answers? Thank you.
The other thing, just to, just to dovetail back on something, on the restriction itself, I just recall that when we did the buildings in North Plymouth, we deed restricted them that if for some reason the entity no longer existed, I think the, the owners of the property are the task force to end homelessness. If they for some reason ended their existence, the building reverts to the town for, to be sold and, and that money be utilized for housing. So that's how we have those agreements in the future to protect our original investment. For some reason, if these people no longer exist, the building reverts to the town of Plymouth to be sold for affordable housing and that money come back to the town.
But a question along those lines, since you brought it up, the total project cost is $7 million. We're being asked for 43% of that, $3 million. That gives us ownership and the right if they do not continue on? Do we get to take it over?
This would be something that, that the, the organization would have to agree to. I would defer.
Are they going to agree to that?
The only thing is that we, because we're bringing.
You need to come to the microphone.
Because the remainder of the money would come from the state, there would need to be a process between the state's restrictions and the local restrictions to come to agreement. Usually, the state, when they're funding a project, encourages the community to participate in what they call mass docs, their standardized loan documents and their standardized deed restriction. Their deed restriction would probably exceed what you would typically install. They, again, as I said, one of the sources would be a 50-year restriction. Both of the sources would require that people be no higher than 30% of median income. I think the qualifications to get in the shelter may even be a little bit lower than that. But it's 30% of median income for the funding round that we went into. And the state typically in those loan documents asks for a reversion to them if the, if the project went into foreclosure. And foreclosure for them is it's no longer being used for its intended use. So they would negotiate with the local community so that both of their interests were incorporated into those documents. That's typically how it's done.
Let's hope we never have to cross that bridge. A question for you. You know, as I mentioned, you're asking the, the residents of Plymouth, the taxpayers of Plymouth, to fund 43% of this. And the rest is coming from the state. Well, yeah, yeah, well, well, let's think hopefully, think positively. That, that answered one question I have. You're not asking any other CPCs in any other communities around us, Carver, Kingston, Bourne, wherever, to contribute in any way to this?
They can't use their funding outside of their communities.
They can't use their funding outside of it.
I don't think Plymouth could use your funding in Brockton or in.
And I don't believe we can. You're correct. So in, in the history of the Coalition, okay, you mentioned that, that you have a number of facilities. And I think in fact, the Baymont Hotel is one of them. Have you gotten funding from other municipalities for these projects? Or is this a first for you?
The, the Baymont is a leased.
A leased, okay.
Those are leased units.
But in terms of any of your other, have you, you know, in your activities, have you gone to a municipality, not, not local residents contributing, but to like a CPC or some other funding source within, within a municipality and asked for the taxpayers to help pay for them?
So there's only, they have two facilities. They have the leased units in the hotel or the motel, and then they have their existing shelter in Kingston. That was developed 30, 40? Okay, 1994. So things cost a lot less back then.
Oh, I know.
And my guess is it was done on a shoestring and maybe a lot of volunteer labor. And there probably wasn't, there was not a CPA act.
So, so basically, you know.
This is the first one.
Yeah, and maybe Susan, in your experience, so this is the, this is the first time you've come through, and this, this, the funding mechanism in, is CPC funding. But this is the first time you've come to a community to ask the taxpayers to help create this?
So we get a very minor, like, we have an opportunity to apply for a grant in the town of Carver. And I'm talking very tiny. But we do have that opportunity. So that, that I'm familiar with. Any other community, I'm not specifically, I don't recall receiving any funds.
The reason, the reason that I asked that is that with asking the taxpayers of Plymouth for 43%, and I'm in no way saying I do not support this, this project, but I just want to clarify. And this may sound like a theme in future things coming up tonight. Will the residents of Plymouth who need family shelter, will they be prioritized over residents of other communities? You, you work the Gambit of the South Shore. So what is your plan to, since the, the residents of Plymouth are paying for, helping pay for this? What's your plan?
Yeah, so first of all, I can start by saying that when a family finds themselves homeless, they go to formerly DHCD, EOHLC, and they go to them and they apply, they, they go through the application process. That's where the income verification or qualification comes in and other details. Every possible effort is made at that point in time to place the family within 20 miles of the community in which they went homeless from. So take the town of Plymouth right now. While the Coalition's been in existence since the early to mid 80s, we've never had a family shelter. We had a teen shelter in Manamit, and we had an individual shelter on Court Street by Holmes Field. When we were trying to, we, we wanted to have this EA shelter, we were having difficulty finding property. And at that point in 1989, we're gifted three acres on Route 80 in Kingston. And that's how we ended up in Kingston. That said, any placement we receive, the state always tries to place families as close to their home community as possible. Now, that can change if there are circumstances that may involve domestic violence or any other family-specific circumstances where it may not be advisable for that family to return to their home community. The effort is more about making sure that there are an adequate number of units available within close proximity to their home to provide people with safe temporary shelter, or families with safe temporary shelter.
But just for clarification, there's no way to designate that a certain percentage must be reserved for Plymouth residents who have.
It would be against the Commonwealth's.
Statutes and, okay.
Absolutely.
Thank you very much, Susan. Appreciate it.
Mr. Mahoney and Mr. Canty?
To the town manager. So this has to be clarified tomorrow, if possible, the number of units that this community is gonna get credit for. So I won't go into my, my whole 40B thing. I understand what my colleague is saying to my left with respect to, you know, getting to this number. I think it's inherently unfair, you know, mobile homes don't, communities with mobile homes don't get credit, et cetera, et cetera. But having said that, in the application, multiple times, it references the number 26. So this whole town meeting was about quote unquote affordable housing. Nowhere was it mentioned that we were gonna get credit for anything less than that number. Because now if we're, we're gonna drop down to one, then at this Thursday's CPC meeting, this article has to be. then at this Thursday's CPC meeting, this article has to be revisited. So I hope we're able to put this to bed tomorrow.
True, yeah.
Did you want to say something, Bill?
No, we'll get an answer on that. But again, when we look at the housing crisis in Plymouth, we look at different demographics. This is about a circumstance of trying to house people efficiently in a crisis. So, you know, it does require some review in terms of what we'll get credit for and what type of language we'll have to have in the deed to get that credit. But it will be something that we'll be working on to get back with a specific number.
This question is for Lynn Barrett, Director of Finance. So while my colleagues were asking their questions and I was listening to the responses, I had an opportunity to reach out to town council to see whether this had been vetted to be reviewed, to see whether it was rather eligible under the CPA as affordable housing, as a legitimate use of funds. And it was indicated to me that you had a conversation with the Coalition?
So we sent a copy of the CPC article and the application to the Coalition just to ask their opinion, and their response was that it was, yes, eligible.
It is eligible.
Yeah.
Did they give any information as to John and my concern about all 26 units counting or not, no?
No, we didn't ask any of those specific questions regarding the housing. And that may be for another group, not necessarily the Coalition, you know, to answer that question.
Sure. Okay, but they did say it was a legitimate use of the funds.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments from the board?
If I could just clarify, just because I don't want folks walking away thinking of it differently. Their response was that the application looks good. And so we're taking that as, after Lynn had sent the application, asking them to review the application, and they responded, "The application looks good." We're taking that as it's an allowable use of the funds. But we're, certainly we'll see clarity on that as well.
Okay, I'm just going to say that I'm going to support this. And I also respect some of the opposition and understand some of the concerns, as Charlie said. But up in Al Park, we do have plenty of public transportation. Gatters in there all the time, I see them stopping everywhere. And it makes sense where it's close to everything, all the detail. And, you know, we have, I think, two charter schools also in Al Park. So it's not all just industrial. We have the MAP Academy, I believe, is in the old Glen Electric. And I think it's Party Light where the other charter school is. So it's not 100% industrial, you know. Not to say that it should be residential, because, believe me, I'm on the train for the development in the right areas also. But I also have to be honest and tell you that I've seen firsthand, as I'm sure you have, of people in need, especially families, children, mothers that really are struggling, single parents. And, believe me, there's a big need, and a lot of people need help. So putting that all aside, my heart goes out to them, and I'm going to support this. And it's going to stop being, you know, not in our backyard. We all have a responsibility to help somebody that needs help. That's the way I was brought up, so that's the way I'm going. So if there's no other comments from the board, and hopefully to get John's answer on the number of units, because if need be, we can always revisit if we have to. But for the sake of keeping things moving right along, what's the wish of the board?
I move we vote approval of Article 16A.
I'll second that motion.
Motion by Mr. Helm, second by Mr. Blitzer, discussion. Mr. Canty, then Mr. Mahoney.
So I said earlier that I was in support of the project, and my only concern was really about the eligibility for CPA funding. So I am going to vote in favor of this tonight. But I would revisit it if I get later information that it's not eligible, just because as much as I think we need a homeless shelter, and I support for the same reasons as the chair expressed, that there's infrastructure there that can be useful to individuals in that situation. I would revisit it in the event that it was found to be ineligible because we can't recommend something to town meeting that's a violation of the law. So if that happens, it's nothing personal, it's just a technical requirement. But I'm hopeful that we will not have to revisit it for that purpose. And I'm hopeful that the rest of the board will vote in the affirmative under that understanding as well. Thank you.
Just building off of Mr. Canty's comments, which I completely agree with, adding on, you know, I support this in its current iteration. With respect to the 26, we got to find that out. Mr. Quintle mentioned that we could always come back and revisit this. But to go from 26 to one is a huge drop. And that would just, and if that happens, that just illustrates that there is another glaring hole in the application process to that committee for funding under affordable. That would have to be addressed.
Thank you, Mr. Blitzer?
I'm all set.
All set. Okay. All set? Okay, Mr. Blitzer?
I vote yes.
Mr. Helm?
Yes.
Mr. Canty?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
And myself, yes. And we're waiting on the legal status of this and the number of units for affordable. With that, passage unanimous, thank you.
Okay.
Mic's off, it's on now. So this is Article 16B, it's affordable housing. This is an application received from Megreco with Mr. Veo. We have worked with Mr. Veo on three different efforts. This is the third, two other efforts, one at State Road in Manamette. We partnered to create 23 units at that location. And then again, a second time on Carver Road, nearly 40 units were created on Carver Road. This is a third collaboration that we've had with this developer here in Plymouth. So the models work to our advantage for both the developer and for the Community Preservation Committee in terms of our impact on how much money we're putting towards these projects and the results of the effort. This building will be privately built by the developer and maintained, but they will be deed restricted units on this site. Right now, at 132, 134 Court Street, the Davis Manor Development, there are already a number of units that are going to be market rate. As a result of those market rate units in the zoning process that the developer went through under inclusionary zoning, he was required to build four affordable units, which he will. This is above and beyond that. At $960,000, which is the request to the Community Preservation Committee, is to convert six market rate units and make them deed restricted units, very similar to what we did at State Road and on Carver Road. Again, as I mentioned before, the units will not be a cost to the town in terms of their maintenance. They will be maintained by the owner. This location is interesting to us because, as you see, we're working through this tonight with different components of the housing, affordable housing community. Earlier, you saw the, looked at, heard the application relevant to people in emergency housing conditions. This is about downtown living for people that are still working. Obviously, they'll have to qualify for the housing qualifications as the units will be deed restricted. We think it's nice that you can live in downtown and work in downtown and there's transportation there and services there. So obviously, this helps with the cost of services to the town. Keeping the population close to services always helps the town meet its obligations in terms of the cost of services. And the unit is more traditional downtown construction, architectural features that are very familiar to this side of Court Street, where it had once been lined with historical homes. This one inspired by the Davis home, which was Cherry Hill, which was most recently packed television, that building out back. That building is gone, but inspired by that architecture, this building on Court Street will carry on that tradition of Court Street returning that, those architectural features back to Court Street at this location. Here are the units inside as they are designed, these one-bedroom units, six of them. Again, that's the front elevation. And as I mentioned, the architecture is reminiscent of the building that we were all familiar with that was once packed television. But prior to that, it was a residence owned by a family. They called the residence Cherry Hill, the Davis family. This is a picture of it on Court Street. So obviously, it's a nice complement to the other residential homes of that era that circle the neighborhood. It's a very distinct area when you come into downtown Plymouth and you take a left at K. Cadiz and you head north on Court Street. You do go through a residential area as you make your way to North Plymouth where these homes exist, and this is to complement that. And again, the architecture was inspired by the original residence that was on the site. There it is, little cherry trees on a hill there, Cherry Hill, the Davis property. I have here tonight Mr. Veo. He can walk you through the process in which he plans to complete this project.
Good evening, Rick Veo from Megreco. So as some of you are aware, and as Bill just illustrated, you know, we have a little bit of a history in creating some affordable housing in town. I think an accurate statement is that we have created more voluntary affordable housing than all other developers combined, would be a pretty accurate statement. We are, you know, thrilled with the partnership we've created with the CPC and the Affordable Housing Trust. I think it's worked very well. I think we have proven that affordable housing can be done in your backyard, and you never know it's there. And it works very well. We build the properties, we manage the properties. We manage them in the same way we would manage them if they were market rate, just under the same criterias. It works extremely well. All of our properties are 100% occupied right now. And that's State Road at 23 units, Five Paul Francis at 16, and 21 Paul Francis at 16 units, all 100% occupied. Those are the major pieces, and then there are smaller pockets within other developments that we've done as well. And I think that total is, you know, well over 70 units that we've created. I think this property, as Bill said, is a great complement to that bank of affordable housing, and specifically where it's in downtown. There's a big need in downtown. I think these units will go very quickly. One-bedroom units are in, you know, very high demand in that area. As you all know, there's plenty of services, plenty of job opportunities in downtown. So I think it will be very well received. If you've driven by the property lately, the back part of the property is designed as over 55 condominiums. The first batch of those are closing within the next two weeks. The entire project should be wrapped up by the end of the year. This front building, I believe the foundation will get poured next week. So this isn't something that, you know, is speculative. I mean, all permits are in place and we're actively under construction. We would anticipate a, you know, a 12-month build cycle. And then there'd be a deed restriction, we'd have occupancies before any funding, you know, would be provided to us, which is again how we've handled all the other properties. So I can certainly answer any questions. We're, again, thrilled with the opportunity to work with the CPC again. And I think this is just another project in what will hopefully be a long string of projects over the next, you know, decade or so. If I may add some color to the last proposal, the 16A. Typically, on a project like that, if 25% of the units are affordable in any project, the entire project is counted as affordable units. So if in fact, what formerly was DHCD says that it's not just considered one building, it's considered 25, 26 family units, then all of them would be considered, even if only six of them were affordable. So that's typically what happens. So just weighing in on that.
Any questions for Mr. Veo? Okay, well, I'd like to say thank you for your endeavor, Mr. Veo. Keep up the good work. And hopefully, we can get some of the other builders, developers in the community to follow track and see, you know, how you're doing things and help us get closer to our number as a community. But it's a nice job, and thank you very much.
Okay.
Oh, yeah.
I'll make the motion to approve.
Second?
Motion by Mr. Blitzer, second by Mr. Canty, discussion, Mr. Mahoney and Mr. Canty, then Mr. Helm.
Yeah, Mr. Veo's reputation precedes him, especially in this arena. He's done a solid job over the years of working with the community and Affordable Housing Trust on creating incremental affordable units for this community. And just on the funding, I just want to let the board know that there's no, this is a majority vote, the 960 is on hand. It'll be two-thirds for the previous applicant, and the next applicant will require borrowing, so those will be two-third votes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I think this is probably the perfect affordable housing type of project, where there's, we're buying a restriction on additional units like this. That is exactly what we should be doing to try and get out of our hole that we're in, the shortage for affordable housing, not just for the people. That helps not just the people that actually need the affordable housing, but it helps the rest of the community too by helping to keep housing prices more manageable for all of us, when the only thing that's available is expensive housing, then the expensive housing gets more expensive. So I know that some people in the past have complained that Mr. Veo gets a lot of these projects. I think he gets them because he's working towards them and putting the effort out there to help the community that he lives and works in. And that should be commended, not discouraged. I would echo previous comments that I wish other people would work at it like Mr. Veo does. But I don't think him repeatedly stepping up to the plate to help us meet our obligation to the benefit of the entire community should be looked at negatively, quite the opposite. So I really am happy to support this project, and I hope that you'll get favorable results from the Advisory and Finance Committee and also certainly from town meeting in April. But thanks for bringing this before us and providing this service and continuing to do this work. Thank you.
You know, I would just like to, you know, amplify something that Mr. Veo said that I think is particularly important for this particular form of affordable housing, where a contractor, where we purchase a deed restriction on a project that is going up and deed restrict units within it, or the entire project. As Mr. Veo pointed out, and I'm pointing this out for the people at home and here so that they can understand something that is very significant. The developer manages those units. The town of Plymouth does not. The taxpayers will pay to buy the deed restriction, and that's it. After that, it's up to the developer. And the taxpayers don't foot the bill for management repairs or anything like that. That's a major savings for, you know, for us. For instance, if you look at this one, I didn't do the calculations on it, but it's a significantly less per unit than, for instance, the Oak Street School, which the town is totally footing the bill on in its entirety. And will continue, the taxpayers will continue to pay for the upkeep and the maintenance of those units. So this is a way to get affordable... So thi- this is a way to get affordable housing that the taxpayers basically subsidize once and don't subsidize going forward.
Any other discussion? Mr. Blitzer?
I vote yes.
Mr. Helm?
Yes.
Mr. Canty?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, okay, thank you. Article um, 16C is the next article, um, and 16C. I have um, provided uh, an updated version of the memo that appears in your book under page uh, 55. Uh, there's an article language, we had to change the map, it's uh, in the lot. Uh, the map is now 115, and the lot is 130, uh, 1,000, excuse me, 1, 1348. Uh, that's the new location of the uh, complex. As many of you know, uh, it was proposed for one location, it's been moved to another as a result of discussions with the neighborhood, accommodations have been made, so I wanted you to have the most recent version of the memo and the article, so that when you voted tonight, you would know uh, the status of that. Again, uh, Article 16C is affordable housing. Uh, again, um, as we go through the evening, uh, looking at emergency housing, looking at more traditional downtown housing, now we're looking at a part, um, uh, housing that is dedicated towards seniors, uh, in a part of Plymouth that's growing rapidly, uh, in a planned community, uh, that has been permitted over the last uh, 17 years and is moving forward. Obviously, we have to start making accommodations in this heart of Plymouth, uh, and uh, Redbrook has uh, made this accommodation with their partner, uh, the Grantham Group. The request is for $4 million. Uh, as a requo, as a, uh, as a result of that, we will get 52 affordable deed restricted units. The age restriction is, uh, with senior housing is 62 and up. Uh, the building will be located off of the green, uh, it's moved, like I said, it's been moved to a new location, uh, we'll see that shortly. All the units will be deed restricted and affordable, uh, for seniors, uh, between 30 and 80% of the area median income. Uh, 100% of the, uh, the apartments will be deeded affordable, uh, forever, so we will have that restriction, uh, for those units and, and that capability. All 52 will qualify towards the Town Plymouth subsidized housing inventory. Um, and at the town's request to mass housing in livable communities, that's what DHCD is called now, they have a new name, HLC. They may be, um, local preference may be, uh, put, uh, set aside for residents, uh, if the town does require, does request that, uh, up to 70% of the units on the first go around. So, uh, there is accommodations to give, uh, preference to local residents, uh, it will be handled, occupancy will be handled after construction, uh, by a housing lottery. Uh, again, this is another example of the developer will develop the property and own the property and maintain the property, there'll be no further cost to, uh, the municipality, uh, after the construction of these units, we'll be getting a deed restriction, they'll be maintaining the building. There will be an onsite manager at this location, uh, in the complex, uh, so, uh, obviously there is, uh, that manager will be handling issues relevant to the population in which they'll be focused on, and that's seniors, 62 and older. The nice thing about this location is that it's, uh, in an area in which, uh, a planned community has been permitted, uh, where there is, uh, services that are developing around this location, there's the, the Y and other, uh, the, the little green there at Redbrook, so there are services in the area, uh, where people can utilize. And, um, another nice example of this is that, uh, like I said, this is the Redbrook, uh, is the developer with the Cranberry Commons at Redbrook, and they are working with the Grantham Group. The Grantham Group will be building and partnering with Redbrook on the construction of this complex, and they've been putting together a kind of financial partners, uh, they'll be going, you know, the total project cost is about $25,000, but they'll be seeking, seeking state and federal tax credits, and they'll be not only, uh, looking at CPA funds, but the local housing trust and state housing trust. Uh, this is all done through the Massachusetts Executive of Housing and Livable Communities, and uh, they'll be looking at home funds. Uh, this is kind of a unique project where, uh, after construction costs, the project will, uh, return a portion, if there is any, after construction will be returned to the town based on a projection of the annual net cash flow of, um, uh, to the CPC. So you have two, uh, there, there are two ways where there will be money coming back to the town, uh, the projection, uh, there will return a portion on any construction cost savings, so that's the first phase of that savings that would be returned to the town. And then the annual net cash flow of the complex, there's a portion of it that comes back to the town of Plymouth, uh, in this, uh, loan, uh, scenario, but it's, um, it's a limited amount of money that's coming back, it's not going to pay back the entire amount, uh, it's only really, uh, you, you have to, uh, manage that around the other financial partners, because that's how the state would like to see, uh, the grant is, is constructed around this loan concept. Um, I'd like to, uh, allow, um, the Grantham Group to talk more about their project and how they plan to, uh, fund it, and, um, but first I want to introduce Dan, who's with Redbrook, who can walk you through, uh, where Redbrook is on this project, uh, how they began the project, uh, and their partnership with the Grantham Group. Dan.
Good evening. Um, I'll, I'll keep it brief, I just want to go over a couple few items, and then when we open up the questions. Um, just to clarify one thing, AD Makepeace doesn't have a partnership here, we're simply donating the land to the Grantham Group, and then the Grantham Group will develop, build, and own the facility itself. Um, sorry, I shouldn't introduce myself, my name is Dan Gorska, I work for the AD Makepeace Company, I'm the Vice President of Development. Over the past while, we've heard from a variety of people, um, including public officials, town staff, um, other members of the community about affordable housing. And one of the things that we have been asked to look at or to task to is, how can we reduce the required 80% AMI to something that's truly affordable? We understand that by law, the 80% is considered affordable, but when you look at the area median incomes, is it really truly affordable for people? So something we were tasked to is how do we reduce 80% AMI? And in this project, working with the Grantham Group, again, by donating land and seeking not only state funds, but municipal funds, that's a way to achieve a lower AMI. So I just wanted to point out the units here, so there's 52 of them, and you guys have a one-page in there that summarizes some of these items. Out of the 52 units, yes, 100% are affordable, but I wanted to point out is that 12 of them are at or below 30% AMI. So now we're talking very deep affordability, and then 30 of them, in addition to those 12, are at or below 60%. So you have 42 of the 52 units at or below 60% AMI, and then the remaining 10 are at or below the 80% AMI. And to, to achieve this deep level of affordability, a project like this does, as I said, requires funding from both state and local, um, resources, and so that's why we're here this evening. Um, so again, the ask is $4 million for 52 units, it's a little less than $80,000 a door, uh, that's being requested from the CPA. Um, as Bill said, I just wanted to touch on the location. Um, as some of you, you guys know now, we propose an alternative location, and we do have a board, I wasn't sure how good this would show up on screen, we do have some boards images, if you guys wanted to look at it more closely or ask more questions, but after receiving feedback from not only Redbrook residents, but also planning board officials, um, the concerns about the location. So we did move the building across the street, largest concern was about parking, um, so this now has its own, uh, secluded parking area built inside the development rather than utilizing on-street parking. Again, if you guys have more questions about those, uh, we're happy to answer, and just, and just before I turn it over to, uh, Grantham Group, I will say, and similar to Rick Veo, as a lifelong resident of Plymouth, projects where a municipal body can work with a private entity to solve and fulfill needs in the town, I would 100% always support that. And so thank you for that time, and for that, I'm just going to turn it over to Walter Rohanian from the Grantham Group. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan and Bill, great job. Um, Mr. Chairman, select board members, my name is Walter Rohanian, and I am the Managing Director of the Grantham Group, and I'm joined here today by Michael Cucciar, who's our Director of Development, and I like to call him my tax credit guru. Uh, so I'll give you a, a brief overview, so Grantham is a Massachusetts-based developer and management agent of affordable housing. We not only develop our projects, but we're also the management agent to these projects as well. Uh, in all of our communities, um, we have developed, we have nearly 600 employees. In the early days, uh, the federal tax credits were enough to be able to build affordable housing. Uh, unfortunately, that's no longer the case, where prices have skyrocketed, and state and local governments are now asked to, uh, take part in funding as well to help get these projects developed, which is one of the reasons why we're here today, and it's mostly, most likely one of the reasons why many cities and towns like Plymouth, uh, have their own Affordable Housing Trust and Community Preservation Committees, so they can help support affordable housing. We've developed all of our projects, uh, with the help of many agencies, uh, whether they be city or town government agencies, uh, and also government agencies like Mass Development and Mass Housing. Back just before COVID, we were fortunate enough that our, uh, company was recognized by Governor Baker, um, and we were, received a citation for our, uh, work in affordable housing. We have projects all across the Commonwealth, Worcester, Webster, Marlborough, Attleboro, North Hampton, Beltratown, and our most recent project in Situate. Uh, this project here, as we said, is 52 units of senior, 62-plus affordable housing, and all 52 units will count towards, uh, the state, the, the, the town's 40B, towards its subsidized housing inventory. Um, as was previously mentioned, 42 of the 52 units will be 60% or below, the remaining 10 units will be at 80% AMI, really deep affordability that we have within the project itself. These are all one-bedroom units, uh, just to kind of give you an idea, uh, of the project itself, which we recently did in Situate, which is very similar to this, um, that project had 30 units, we had 1,000 applicants that applied for 30 units, um, and, uh, as you can imagine, the number of people that are looking for affordable housing, it's just, there's just not enough units to be able to find it, uh, and we currently have a waitlist of over 250 people. And also just to give you a little bit of, of information as well, out of the units that we have there in Situate, 95% are from Situate itself, so the lion's share of the residents are actually local as well. And these are residents that, um, maybe have, um, just weren't able to afford, uh, where they currently were, and needed a break and needed a rental subsidy, and that's what this project's able to offer to them. So, are there any questions that I might be able to ask?
Any questions? John?
So, similar to what I asked Ms. Giavennetti earlier, you, you agree with her assessment, uh, with respect to the application process at the state level?
With, so we've actually had conversations with the state, uh, we won't be able to apply or get funded if there isn't a local commitment.
Okay, so you, your application will be put on a shelf and not even accepted?
We wouldn't, yeah, we wouldn't be able to file the application, so for us, it, we just wouldn't go forward.
Right, okay. I asked you, uh, in the 1820 court one, when the CPC took this application up, and it references, uh, or, you know, talks about, um, you know, blending in, yeah, the projects over the course of years, uh, which the committee has done a good job on, you don't need money, again, until FY '27, which is July 1st of '26. You can get the project done with the 2021 million that you get from other sources and bring us in at the end, God willing.
27 most likely will be, fiscal year 27 will most likely be too late for us, we're hoping to be able to get in fiscal year 26.
Okay, so that was, I, I asked that question when, when we, uh, debated or, you know, discussed this article. So, let's talk about, then let's go into when you're going to put a shovel in the ground, and what is your timeline?
So with, so our hope is to be able to file an application, assuming we get through town meeting, and we get an approval of the, um, CPC money, in addition to, we're also asking the Affordable Housing Trust Fund to put in a half a million dollars, assuming we have that total commitment of four and a half million dollars, our goal is to be able to get an application into the state. A pre-app would be due sometime the end of June, and a full application would be due in September. The hope is that an award would be made sometime, uh, in either December or January, and if that's the case, we would be able to get into the ground, uh, hopefully sometime, uh, early spring, April, something like that, May. So that's, i- if we get approved the first time we go in, you just don't know whether or not an approval's going to come, we might have the best application that's out there, but sometime there were 10 projects before us that were waiting for funding as well. It's really, you want to put the best application forward to be able to have an opportunity to get funded.
Sure, so if you put a shovel in the ground in April or May of '25?
Yep.
You would expect that entire building to be ready for people to move in before July 1st of '26?
No, no, it would be a year, correct, so we're, we're just kind of conflating our fiscal years here. So you said fiscal year 2027 funds, which would be July 1st of 2026?
Correct.
That, that would work, that would actually line up with our timeline.
Okay, perfect, yes. Thanks. All right, so last thing, you've, in the last 72 hours, there's been an announcement, and maybe this is to Dan also, you've, you're going to propose an alternative, alternative location for this project?
Correct.
Okay? So, I'm guessing you haven't had a chance or an opportunity to put together like a, a little, uh, town hall down in your, down in Redbrook, so that you can, I just hope that this is all, this option is rolled out to those citizens that reside down in your development, so that they all have an opportunity to come out, ask questions, you know, give their opinion and weigh in on what you're proposing, okay?
Yeah, if you don't mind, I'll, I'll comment. Just on, just on the process a little bit of what we've done. So, back a little bit before Thanksgiving, we made an announcement to the community that here is the location, here's the project we were doing. Since then, we've received a lot of feedback. We had a resident meeting on January 8th, I believe, but don't quote me exactly on that date, where we had a virtual meeting, went through the presentation, allowed people to come on, ask questions, we took that feedback, we then had another public meeting with Planning Board as an informational meeting, and so residents were allowed there as well, we've received all that feedback, and that's what, all that feedback and listening to the concerns residents had about the location, that's what, um, ultimately moved it to this location. So right now, we literally just sent this to the community yesterday, midday, plus or minus, for the community to look at. So far, the responses have been positive. Last night, we were also at a Precinct 17 meeting where there were some residents there as well, um, to ask questions, we presented the new location there, and if, if the board wants, we, we have no problem having another meeting about this particular location. Um, you know, again, it is important to note that the Planning Board ultimately is our granting authority, so we have to go through the Planning Board process, um, so that's another opportunity also to weigh in.
Dan, with the volume, with the volume of emails that this board and others have received, I just think that it's, should, it's best practice that, you know, in the next couple of weeks, you guys have an open forum down there, for people who aren't proficient in emails and social media, so that they can come out and at least feel like they're part of the process.
Okay. I'll have to work on logistics if you're talking like an open, like, it's a lot of people that live in the community. Um, but no, I, I hear it, yeah, understood.
I'd be more than happy to ask, they could use a school auditorium or whatever you might need to do it properly.
Okay, thank you, yeah, we've used that in the past.
The town can, we can do that much, so.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, this is a question for Dan first, and then I want to talk to Grantham, it's, uh, Dan, the problem I got, you know, we've, we've tasked the CPC to come up with more affordable housing, and that's what the funding, that's part of what that funding is for. So we've been really, you know, sticklers about that, uh, when we've talked to them, and, and Bill knows that. The problem I got, this project, and, and I spent a lot of time, I, I listened to, I talked to a lot of people, I talked to, uh, both sides, uh, my, my, and I actually went down, I saw the original site, which I'm glad you changed in the site, because what I, the site I saw, it just, I didn't know how you were going to be able to put that many units and parking right there, I think you would have taken away from the center, from the, what I call the center where the restaurants are, you know, they need all that parking, so you would have caused problems for them, I think. But that's not, that's not our responsibility, that's, that's, that's the, the, uh, Planning Board's job to do that. Our responsibility is, is how this is funded, and when, when you originally, and what year it was, 2015, whatever year that, the agreement to do affordable housing, uh, you're 103 units short. So my question today is, and I know you're donating land to them, but we're giving, they want to get 4 million from the taxpayers, and really, it's, it's really kind, it's your responsibility to, to create the And really, it's, it's really, it's your responsibility to, to create these, these 103 units. So why are the taxpayers subsidizing your obligation? If you can answer that for me?
Yes.
Because this is what I'm struggling with.
Absolutely. So our permit was issued back in 2008. We had a special permit, and then we have the MOU. The MOU talks about how the affordable could get done as far as, like, the types of units, this, that, and the other. So the Makepeace Company committed to do 103. We required to do 74. The company agreed to do above and beyond that. The requirement is at the 80% AMI level. So, the reason for the request of funding isn't to fulfill the affordable requirements, it's to fulfill that gap between when you go from 80% AMI down to 60 and then down to 30. There's a huge gap in there. And these buildings aren't financeable when you have that level, a deep level of affordability just because operational expenses-wise, they could speak more to that, they're not financeable. So in order to get them financeable, you need heavily subsidized. And so that's why the request is here. From a Red Brook perspective too, if, if the town, and again, we, we took the words from public officials, Planning Board members about that true affordability number, if, if the community doesn't want to support this level of affordability, we'd go back and would do our 80% as required. So this was coming from an ask about how do we reduce the level of AMI? And so I thought we, we, between us and the Granton Group, we figured out a way, we'll donate the land. You know, this location is costing more than the other ones, that's one of the reasons why we proposed the other site. We're not going to ask the town for more money. That's something that the Granton Group and ourselves will figure out. But that's what it's buying. It's buying that deep level of affordability.
But, but Dan, how many homes, how many units, let's call them units, homes, whatever, are you building at Red Brook?
How many? Have we built or are we?
How many are you planning on building?
So our permit's for 1175, total.
Total. So, okay, that's a lot of units, and, you know, to say that that site was less affordable, you know, you've got 1,175 homeowners that you've got to answer to, you know, so, you know, to save a couple of bucks, I, you know, I'm glad you're moving the site. I, I, I'm glad you're moving the site because that site, if I lived there, it wouldn't have worked for me, I can tell you that. So with that being said, I, the last gentleman, Mr. Veo Megrow came, that was a voluntary affordable housing, and I can support that. I just think that, I think that Makepeace should be donating more money to this project. It would make more sense to me. It doesn't, I'm struggling with the taxpayers paying for this. It, let me tell you, it's a great 52 units, it's a great project, 70% Plymouth residents. I think it's a fantastic project in the right spot, and I, hopefully you got the right spot. But I just think the funding, I, I can't support the funding. I, I, it just, it doesn't make sense to me. And, and I respect you, and, and I know they're a reputable company. I checked the company, very reputable, but, you know, I just can't support this, so. Thanks.
Mr. Canty?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I had the opportunity to go to Precinct 17 last night where I saw Mr. Gorsika and members of the Precinct 17 Caucus holding a forum where about 35 members of Red Brook residents were, were in attendance with their comments and concerns. I also had an opportunity to go back on December 4th, I think it was, to a prior Precinct 17 Caucus where this was discussed, and at that time, there were another, some of them were the same, but there were about 35, 40 people in attendance at, at that caucus as well. So there was a lot of concerns about this project in Red Brook from the residents that lived there. Some of them had lived there for a bit, some have just relatively recently moved in. Last night, it seemed as if some of the residents that spoke had less of an issue now that it's across the street, but not all of them were, were assuaged by the change. But I guess my concern is similar to Mr. Bletzer's concern. I, when the town, through the Planning Board, issued this permit and it had a deal with, I know it went from in the 70s to 103 units, that was a commitment that was made when the project was approved, Red Brook was approved. And we task, I mean, one of the tools in our toolbox for affordable housing with the Community Preservation Committee is to try and go out and find additional affordable housing opportunities in the community beyond what developers are, are agreeing to produce, right? So you have a commitment right now to build 103, you want 4 million, which is basically an entire year of CPA money coming in at current rate. So, is there a possibility of increasing your commitment to Plymouth to build affordable housing by, say, 26 units so that half of the units that this project would represent, would count towards your pre-existing obligation? And half of them would count towards further commitments to Plymouth to ease our overall affordable housing needs? I would think Mr. Gorsika would probably be the best recipient of that question.
Yeah, great question. The answer right now would be no. We committed to do, required to do 74, and that's based on TDR usage, and that's just important to note. We went above and beyond to the 103. And again, the requirement's 80%. And I am a proponent of what's truly affordable, and 80% is not. And so that's what we're aiming for, and that's why we're asking for the funds. Again, if the board and A and F and the town meeting ultimately don't want to support that level of affordability, that's on the town and that's on the town, you know, the town meeting members, and that's fine. And we'll go back and we'll do affordability at 80%, like other developers, like the 40B developments that you see. And we all know those just aren't truly affordable. We are just trying to bring something in that people can actually afford. If you look at a one-bedroom apartment at 80% AMI, you're talking almost $1,900. We all know that's not affordable, okay? When you get down to that 60 and 30%, you are now getting below $1,000 a month. So again, our stance is, we were asked by Planning Board members, by other public officials, how do we reduce the AMI? The only way to reduce the AMI to that level is to have this level of partnership.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from the board? Mr. Helm?
A question from Mr. Cohen. In your materials, Bill, although you, it does say that the approval was unanimous, I do note that in the description below, four voted in favor and two were in opposition. Okay? Who were those two in opposition?
So yes, so there was a dissenting opinion, myself and Rush Shirley, the representative of the Housing Authority, and myself voted not in favor.
Okay.
But tonight, obviously, my job as the chair of the committee is to present it in, in a manner in which the committee voted. We have moved on from that point. It's now time for the boards and committees to discuss it, but there was a dissenting opinion, and it was really, pretty much focused around what Charlie and I believe, Mr. Canty, indicated.
So it was, had they, had they already discussed reducing the AMI in the, in the large majority of units from 80 to 60 and below? Or were you, or were you unaware of that?
I think that, that is, for me, that is. No, yes. I think it's after the CP.
Okay, all right. I'm just trying to understand why, and, you know, I understand what your job is, you know? But let's think about the caucuses where the advisory and finance members are often asked to explain why they were dissenting, you know? And it is very rare to see a non-unanimous CPC article come forward.
As, as Dan indicated, it was presented to the committee, and two of the members had reservations. The dissenting opinion was that, in line with Mr. Bletzer and Mr. Canty, that in 2000 and, when they, in 2008, when they went through the conclusionary zoning process, they were required to build a certain amount of units. And there were zoning changes at the location to accommodate the cost which is incurred by building those units, to absorb those costs. That's why the zoning was changed from rural residential agricultural into this mixed use. So staying in the spirit of that original understanding, that's how we came to that determination.
Thank you. Any other questions, excuse me, from the board?
On that motion of approval, Mr. Chairman?
Motion?
I'll second.
Motion by Mr. Mahoney, second by Mr. Helm. Discussion, Mr. Canty?
So, I've heard from a lot of residents down in Red Brook about their concerns, and I've also developed my own concerns about the project. Specifically, the reasons that I'm going to be voting no on this though are what myself and Mr. Bletzer talked about that, in our questions, that the town is already relying on 103 units of affordable housing being produced in Red Brook as part of the agreement to allow Makepeace to build a total of 1,175 units down there, presumably making a lot of money in the exercise, which I don't begrudge them, that's their business. But I do think it's relevant to question the interest of the town in subsidizing a pre-existing obligation made by that, by that developer a number of years ago in, by giving $4 million, which is an entire year's worth again of Community Preservation Committee funds, meaning it's not just a year's worth of funds, it's a year's worth of other projects that the CPC could do. Open space, historic preservation, and certainly other affordable housing projects. And I just, without the town getting more total units, because that's what the town is suffering from, the affordability is also an issue. And I like, candidly, I like that aspect of the project, the affordability. I also appreciate the project being moved across the street because while it didn't solve all the residents' problems, it did ease some of the problems. So I think that's an example of, of the people at Red Brook and Granton working together with the community on that, so I like that. And the affordable, the deeper affordability is nice, but there's two factors that we need affordable housing for in Plymouth. It's avoiding 40B projects from coming in and overriding local zoning and creating drains on our infrastructure throughout the community in places we are not set up for, and it's providing a necessary service to residents. Both things are important. This really, this provides a lot of service to residents, better than just market rate 80% based affordable housing units would, but it doesn't move the needle on that 40B protection, and it, the optics of subsidizing, I understand that it's a local contribution to a larger grant, you need local commitment, I understand that. But the optics of subsidizing a private developer's pre-existing obligation and that, that type of policy direction for me is just a bridge too far without getting more than just deeper affordability on the units. So, maybe this is something that could be looked at in further detail down the road if the parties are still work, willing to work together and work with Red Brook and the residents there about making this more palatable to them as well. But for me, the, the pre-existing obligation being subsidized and the opportunity cost of other projects is just too much for me to support this project at this time. But I do appreciate the presentation and some of the efforts that have been put forth, particularly recently, to try and work with the, the folks down there. So, thank you guys for your time, but I will be voting no.
Mr. Helm?
I understand the, the back and forth that has gone on within the Red Brook community with the developers and, and the residents. I'd like to take this perspective of community out beyond Red Brook. Red Brook is part of the Plymouth community. We're all in this together. Pine Hills, North Plymouth, Manomet, Red Brook, Cedarville, all of us. All of us within the hundred-odd square miles of the boundaries of Plymouth. We are a community, we are together. And right now, our seniors are scared. They are scared of our rising taxes, right now. They were concerned for years, now they're scared. And you know why they're scared? Because they're seeing the eventuality of needing to sell their houses because on fixed incomes they can't afford the taxes, and they're freaked out because they know the rental situation. The cost of trying to find something is probably actually more than they're going to be paying in taxes. So they're between a rock and a hard place. These are our, these are our senior citizens. These are people that we need to care about. This is an opportunity, and I understand the arguments about a commitment to the 100-whatever units, and, and this goes towards that commitment, okay? It's not outside of it, it's not counted in, it's part of it. And what it does with the six, with the units, the 70% that can be designated for Plymouth residents and the concurrent 60% AMI and below, for the large majority of this, goes towards addressing the concerns of our community citizens, our seniors who live in this community. I can't vote no on this. At $80,000 a door, okay? That is so far below what town meeting agreed to do at Oak Street just at the last town meeting. It isn't even funny. And to, you know, we, we must support our seniors, okay? This is a way to do it. This is, not only does it support them and their need that they are in a, in a housing need at a time in their life when we should not subject people in our community to, you know, to deprivation of housing, okay? It also, it, it also allows the commu, these, these, our seniors to remain in our community, to not have to go someplace else, okay? Plymouth is desirable for a lot of reasons, okay? People will talk about our, you know, our natural environment, our oceans, beaches, our ponds. But also, one of the desirable aspects of Plymouth and why people are coming here is that we have a desirable culture. We care about each other. Plymouth is kind of like an interesting island of people from all sorts of different backgrounds who actually care about each other. And I think that that's what this is about. This is about caring for our senior residents who are very concerned, many are frightened, many are on the brink of selling their houses and trying to have to find some other place to live in a housing market, a rental market that is akin to hell at this point. So I'm going to be supporting this.
We, we usually have a motion on the, on the table, so, I'm sorry. If I let you do it, I have to let everybody do it. Any other comments from the board? Okay, well, I was on a plane last night, that's why you didn't see me down at Red Brook, so I apologize. But in my tenure, and I have a lot of years, and I've never seen as much fan mail as, as I have on this one. And when, when I say that, and I'm not being rude, I mean, you know, you, we've all seen it, you get one person that writes it, and they just put their different names. These were creatively, I mean, in some of the presentations, you know, we're going to get some job apps out to some of those, those people, they did a good job. And I want you to know, I read them all. That being said, I, you know, I agree with Harry 100% that we need to do something right for our seniors. They're struggling. And I understand Kevin's concern with the number of units that were agreed to when you brought the project to the town and whatever agreement you have, an Osmond, I don't know if it's an Osmond, but whatever agreement you have.
Yeah.
So I, I apologize, I don't, you know, didn't have time to look all that up. But rather than, you know, if it was going to go by way of the, the no vote, regardless of how the vote was going to go tonight, is this something that couldn't possibly wait till the fall? And, and, you know, in the spirit of compromise between the residents to rent it outright? And, I mean, I know you all talked about a timeframe earlier, I think. So I, you know, I don't have all the, all the gist in the background, but is it something that you might consider? but is it something that you might consider, you think might be better? Or you want to let it fly with the way the vote goes? And it's going to go to Town Meeting anyway unless we, you know... I mean, I just want to know what your thoughts are for that, that's all.
Can you guys hear me?
Yep.
So unless these folks disagree with me, no, I don't want to move it. We're prepared to have any conversations we need to. We're prepared to talk to Town Meeting members. We think this is a very, very important issue. And, yeah, unless you guys disagree as far as doing that. But no, we want to go ahead for it. CPC voted in favor, four to two into one abstention. And I know you guys are going to take a vote in A and F. And whatever conversations we need to continue with our residents, with you folks, or the town in general, we're prepared to do so.
Okay. Any other comments? Mr. Bletzer? I vote no. Mr. Helm?
Yes.
Mr. Canty?
No.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
And myself, yes.
Thank you, everyone. The wheels gets in there quick.
But in saying that, it carries. Make sure that there's a meeting set up with the residents that you agree to. Okay, please, thank you.
Okay, Article 16E, we did. And 16E and 16F, I've grouped them together in one slide because they are articles that you have approved to Town Meeting. Town Meeting has approved, so 16E, Pilgrim Hall. We're doing a borrowing authorization reduction for 16E. And...
Bill, we did this.
It's in the admin notes.
When did you vote on it?
At the beginning of the meeting, you were over there.
Oh, okay. All right. So, 16E and D...
I didn't mean to upset you, did we upset you?
No, no, I didn't know that it was in admin.
You're good.
That's a first, that it went to admin. So you don't need to hear E, F, and J?
Correct.
Okay, my presentation is complete, thank you.
All righty. Spring Special Town Meeting Warrant Article Discussions. Public comment. Will you make a little line, you want to come up first? Just, when you come up, make sure the green light's on and you identify yourself for the... For the public watching. And we usually try to keep it to like three minutes if we can. If not, you can ask for more time.
Certainly, thank you very much. My name is Kimberly Karas, and I'm a, well, I wasn't a butter to the former site, but I'm a resident of Red Brook. Thank you for your thoughtful discussions. Just a couple of points, and I know you've had voluminous materials presented by myself, so I won't go into all of that. I thank you for your consideration and time. I just want to bring a few things to your attention. The meeting last night that we had with Precinct 17, unfortunately, there were Zoom issues. So probably about, I would say, 25 to maybe 35 residents who wanted to weigh in and be part of that were not able to for technical difficulties. So I just want you folks to be aware of that. So that was unfortunate, but, and to no one's fault. I'm not casting a version at anyone. But just as far as weighing in, and I'm glad Mr. Mahoney made the comment about having more discussions with the residents because that was an opportunity last night that folks heard of a change only yesterday afternoon, wanted to weigh in, and about half of or more of the people who wanted to participate were not able. So that's just something I wanted you to be aware of. I personally have a sister who has cerebral palsy, and elderly housing includes veterans and also disabled individuals. So it's a matter close to my heart, not just for the elderly, but also for disabled persons, which I live with day to day, with a family member. So this is a project I'm really happy about, the change of the location, the spirit of the project. I'm also very happy about the private obligation to be subsidized with taxpayer money and the CPC funds, not so happy about. But that being said, and assuming that maybe, well, I'm just going to table that for now. I just, what was concerning with part of the slideshow tonight, and just way of reference with the one slide that had the Red Brook proposal on there, it says, "Close to Red Brook Community Services." I just want everyone to understand, and if you haven't come down to see us, please do. It's a car-dependent community. And I know that these concerns may be more appropriate for the planning board, but you folks have had to weigh in. And if you're concerned about seniors, then you need to, I think the town needs to step up if this goes forward. And GATRA needs to be expanded, there's no dial ride service in Red Brook. Dial ride only services areas within three quarters of a mile from a fixed route, which does not exist in Red Brook. GATRA is not a real option for shopping or medical appointments. Requires line switching, so if you're disabled and disabled elderly, that's going to be difficult. Cab and Uber, good luck, good luck with that. You come to my house and try to get one. They, you're too remote, no, we're not coming out here, it's not profitable for us. So they often refuse services, I know this firsthand. And there's zero dial ride services for anyone with a physical disability.
You're over three minutes by the time end. How much more do you?
Just maybe a minute. So, I mean, I'm just saying, if you care about the seniors. One of the nice things about the Situate Place was walking distance to the senior center with a meal for the seniors for only $5 a day. I mean, this is quite a ride. They're on, you talk about the island of Plymouth, Red Brook is an island within Plymouth. So there's going to be, I mean, they need town services. If you're going to put seniors, you know, in this type of setting, they need access. The nearest pharmacy is six miles, the nearest supermarket. You've got overpriced goods in a teeny little store, a primary care practice that's not accepting new patients, an ATM, it's not a full-service bank. They have to go out to get anything done. So the town needs to support that, too. If you really care about the seniors, then you need to bring access to other areas of town, to this community. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Helm?
Yeah, just, I don't usually comment on public comment, but you brought up something that I want to make sure that the residents watching know. The Select Board is categorically working on exactly what you're saying through the Senior Task Force at the Cal. Okay, we've been at it for over a year. We are working to get age and dementia-friendly designation for the town of Plymouth so we can get grant funds in order to expand the bus lines or actually have one. And all of those things that you're talking about that are consequent to the nature of Plymouth being spread out by so many miles. So, we're, the project is well underway. The findings of surveys are being digested to create the program. So, you said if we are concerned about the elderly, okay? We have acted, we are concerned about the elderly, so, but, and disabled. So, that's... That's, okay. But I just thought that, just for the sake of clarity for everybody watching, this board considers the seniors a prior, an important component of our, of our community. And we have, are putting things in place to move forward in that area.
Somebody else want to speak? Young man?
Happy birthday.
Thank you. Everett Malaguti, Precinct 2. I would actually like to state my opinion and opinion of some of my constituents as well, too, from a prior article, and that would be Article 16A. And in full disclosure, while my comments may be some that are not, that are similar to ones that are on Facebook, I have not seen the Facebook posts about this project at all. So mine are not anywhere derogatory or anything like that from. Those are mine are just stating the fact about my opinion and the opinions of my constituents. So, while Plymouth does need a lot of affordable housing and in many different forms through transitional emergency and standard as-of-right affordable housing. Myself, I do not believe that the Project 54 Industrial Park Road, not Industrial Road, is the appropriate area. And while the Dover Amendment supersedes a lot of this, I understand that, and this is not where I'm coming from, of challenging that. What I'm stating is, we're looking at, as Mr. Helm put it, that the seniors are scared and they're getting it between a rock and a hard place. I think the seniors are more than just that. I think it's a rock and a hard place and an anvil over their head. And that it's not just them, it's everyone that's scared about their taxes, looking at the affordability of living in Plymouth and working in Plymouth, let alone. And I think that we need to do a major-pronged approach, not just looking for economic development, but we need to hone in on why our areas are zoned that way. While we are looking at this project going forward, dependent on Town Meeting, that we have been allowing multiple nonprofits and non-paying entities to enter into our most productive areas that are zoned, the like industrial districts. While you could challenge the arguments with the charter schools, we have other nonprofits that have taken hundreds of thousands of taxable dollars away from the citizens to help either balance or help stabilize the budget. Also, if we're looking at new areas of opportunity, we should also look at prior developments that have actually happened within the town to actually help with the economic development, i.e. one of the projects, Amazon. Multiple acres of that site that was zoned for commercial uses is wasted asphalt and parking lot. The town could have done a better job of bargaining at the time and required them to do a structured parking apparatus to free up multiple acres for other uses and other entities. These are some of the things that need to be looked at going forward, not just now, but back in the future and learning from these mistakes. I don't think that, while this project may not seem like it's that big of a deal in a way, we need to look at it as how people also perceive, how the public perceives the budget in a way, too. $5,000 here, $20,000 here, it may be small, but everything adds up, and that's why we have these problems. If we don't nip anything in the butt at the beginning, we're just going to keep exacerbating the problem. And while a lot of my constituents that I have talked with, not all of them entirely, are not thrilled about Article 16A, we need to look at everything in this approach, which is also why I believe we need to start as well, too, going after one of the recommendations of the Reverend Idea Task Force of the pilot, silent, and guillette proposal to help ease this burden, but also give some accountability to the nonprofits that have been going into these projects. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, thank you. Name's Keith Growlin, I live at Four River Bridge Way in Red Brook. I've been a resident now for almost eight years at Red Brook. So I'm one of the original pioneers, as we called ourselves, one of the first neighborhoods built there. How do we get the yes on this deal, right? The affordable housing and senior housing? My biggest issue with ADM, the developer, is the special, the way the special permit is written. They basically think they have autocratic rule over this development because until they get to 95%, as residents, we don't really have a say in anything they do. And that's the statements that have come out of this organization. So my biggest problem is transparency and communication. They have never, ever communicated and been transparent in the eight years I've lived there, in the way they should be, to the residents that eventually have to take this place over. We have to own this someday. We have to own the wastewater treatment plant someday. And they basically, at every turn, basically ignore the residents who have to live there in perpetuity when they're done with their 95% build-out. I appreciate the comments from the board tonight because I think you're sending a message that this isn't a perfect deal. It never was, and it's going to help us as residents understand that CPC didn't think it was a perfect deal because I've looked at most of your town warrants, and most town warrants tend to have a unanimous approval. So let me just go over a couple of things that are getting to yes. So in November of 2019, Michael Hogan signed an MOU confirming the 103 affordable units. You're not talking 4 million, you're talking four and a half because Affordable Trust is being asked for a half a million dollars. It's a lot of taxpayer money, no matter how you look at it. I watched the Affordable House Trust meeting the other morning. They just produced their 2024 housing plan. Please look at it. Red Brook is in there for 103 units. Doesn't say that Granton was going to help them with it, there wasn't going to be anybody helping them with it. It was published and it's on the website. So please, residents need to know that Red Brook and ADM should be accountable for their, what they promised in that 2019 MOU. The thing about the seniors, I totally agree. Mr. Helm, I saw you at the precinct chair meeting the other night, and you said as a resident, not representing the board, you said, "We need to create a committee to do line item looks at these budgets." The reason why seniors are struggling in this town is because if you look at, I've been here eight years, I've seen the growth of the budget here in eight years. It's unsustainable. I don't understand why Mr. Brandisi didn't say the other night that an override is coming, and it's coming faster than anybody realizes in this town. So please, the residents need a voice. At the top of the organization chart for the town of Plymouth, it says citizens. The citizens are the people that drive this community. At the top of the Red Brook chart is the landowners. The landowners drive Red Brook. Both of those, both of those pieces have been denied representation. And what I'm trying to basically get across to you and public tonight is I appreciate the vote. I knew it was going to pass, I knew it was going to be close because we had indications of which way it was going. When Mr. Cohen basically voted against it at the CPC meeting, I think Mr. Mahoney was there and he voted yes. And I said, okay, so four to two with an abstention. I knew we had a chance to at least have our voice heard. You guys have seen the data, you've seen the residents. We've had over 40% of the residents respond in that survey that we put out. Like you said, you should hire some of these people at Red Brook. We have some great people that have moved to Red Brook. We want affordable, we want to help seniors, we want to create an age-friendly environment. We want an aging-in-place community.
It's been three minutes.
Okay, so I appreciate all what you've done, but please, it's time the residents and the citizens of Plymouth get a break. Because the only reason why they're not going to be able to afford to live here is because of the way this thing, this town has been run. And we need to make some changes. So thank you very much.
Stevie Leiden, Precinct 17. I believe at the Selectment's meeting or the joint meeting, Mr. Brandisi came out and said that a two-and-a-half override is coming. And he was adamant about that. The other thing is, the top of the chart says citizens. Must be just 10% because they're the only ones that ever vote. So 10% of the people are getting representation. I live down in South Plymouth, I've been there 40 years before the Ponds of Plymouth, before Danfield, before, you know, Red Brook. I'm 75 years old, I'm a senior, I'm on fixed income. I have to drive, when I moved there, there was no supermarket, no... I mean, these are all things that weren't there. I knew that when I moved there. Now all of a sudden, gee, we don't have a supermarket, we don't have this, we don't have that. Well, you know, duh, it's not a surprise. I'm sorry, and if you look at the seniors' affordable housing, where in the hell are we going to put it? North Plymouth, I think that's all built out. West Plymouth, gee, I think that's all built out. So if this town wants to do anything to help the senior citizens, it's in South Plymouth, and that's where it is. Could things be better? Sure. When Manomette lost their supermarket up there, they didn't... When Manhamit lost their supermarket up there, they didn't have a supermarket, they had to drive. Well, they got one now, so it's not enough to Red Brook to provide a supermarket or, you know, things like that. I think if the citizens want it, let them go out and like the people in Manhamit did, go find Clements or something like that to come in. But, you know, and ADM Makepeace, they moved. ADM Makepeace has spent over eight million dollars in mitigation for traffic. How much did Pine Hills pay? Close to, well, so far, nothing, and they're not even going to come close to that. So it's not like Pine Hills hasn't invested in the Red Brook community, because they have. So that's all I got to say.
Gentlemen, I'm obviously from Red Brook, and I would like to take, to task this passion for affordable housing being offered only for the elderly. I can't bring up the statistics at this point, but the people that need the affordable housing the most, the very most, are single parents with children that can't afford to live in place. Why are we so focused on bringing elderly, more elderly, into the Red Brook? Use the money properly. Look at the statistics and fix it.
Kevin O'Neill, Ten Daisy Lane, right there in Red Brook. I guess one of the comments that I had is during the presentation that we've saw in previous events, they've mentioned the amenities that are available to the seniors or whoever's going to be going there. I think Kimberly may have touched on it before. They talked about having a bank. It's not a bank, it's just an ATM. They talked about the healthcare facility, which is not accepting, anyone is not accepting any new patients, problem. There's the PT place, that's good, that might be helpful for them, but the two restaurants with very limited parking there, these people aren't going to be able to afford to eat at those restaurants, so they're going to have to leave Red Brook to seek any of those items or amenities that they're referencing. So what he's listing for amenities, they don't exist to these folks, they barely exist to us. So appreciate the time, appreciate.
Anyone else? Excuse me.
I'm Sam Thompson, I'm a resident of Red Brook, Red Brook as well. Yeah, there's a lot of impassioned folks, a lot of voices, and I really appreciate, first of all, the approach of the, of the board here. Really appreciated your comments. There is no ideal place, you know? There is, you know, if we put it downtown, that'd be great, but the reality is the reality, problems are the problems, and I think that, I appreciate that we're looking to solve the problems. You know, I can't speak for the community, I speak for myself, my family. I have three kids that go to Plymouth South, actually, two of them, one's a baby, but I look forward to it, and I think it's a great place to live. I think the amenities are the neighbors, the community, the trails, the garden. I can't afford to eat at the restaurants either, but they're pretty tasty when you can get by. So I think it's a good place to live. I'm glad that people are active and passionate about it, but I certainly support it, and I know many people that do, but I speak for myself tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Jenny, do we have anyone online? Hello, can you hear us?
I can hear you, can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Hi, my name is Mari Ryan, and I am a resident at thirty-three Mountain Laurel Way in the Red Brook community. And I want to thank Mr. Chairman and committee members for your real detailed approach to this sixteen C article for the town meeting. I just want to bring to attention something that has flooded your inbox, and that is a, a survey that was conducted by, here within the Red Brook community to get the opinions of our residents. We've had very little communication in a meaningful way, we feel, from ADM in terms of being able to really understand what the concerns of the citizens here in Red Brook are. We sent that, a copy of that survey to you. Four hundred and twenty Red Brook residents responded to that survey, which represents forty percent of the members here, and ninety-seven, ninety-eight percent of those who responded are registered to vote in Plymouth. So this is the, the voice of the citizens here in the Red Brook community. While we appreciate the response that ADM and Granton have made on the new location, we recognize that it doesn't solve all of concerns that have been addressed in, in some of the conversations and certainly in the response to the survey. Just so you know, fifty percent of the people who responded to the survey actually put comments in the survey. That has all been sent to you. The proposed location still does not address significant traffic issues, it's in an already congested area, and there's increased traffic near a playground, there's no overflow parking for visitors or caregivers, thereby impacting adjacent neighbors. The positioning of the driveway is approximately fifty yards from the already congested main intersection at River Run. The size of the scale and scale of the building is large and not in keeping with the intentions of the traditional rural village development. You've talked a lot tonight about the hundred and three unit obligation of Makepeace for affordable housing, and we still do not have answers how beyond these fifty-two units they are going to complete that obligation. And as residents, we really want to understand, how is, how are those obligations going to be fulfilled, and will we, as taxpayers, be asked to pay for that in some other way? So finally, the, you know, the taxpayer aspect of this, which you've addressed, is to whether this is the best use of the funding, a full years of CPA funding, and what's the opportunity cost and lost projects that potentially would be missed as a result of utilizing funding for that purpose. So the last piece I just want to mention is that the special permit has a square footage outlined, that the permit, the permit calls for use of the village mixed-use area and does specify amount of square footage, and this project that they're proposing certainly exceeds their own guidelines into the, that, that they were permitted for. The other piece I wanted to just mention, at the CPC meeting, there was concern about the sort of order of operation here in terms of the bringing this project on the warrant at the time that it did. And this project is yet to be fully reviewed and vetted by the planning board, the zoning board, the Affordable Housing Trust. And so this feels a little out of sequence, and wondering why we have gotten to a point where we have something that's, the town is going to, the citizens of the town are going to be asked to put money into when it hasn't really been following what I believe to be standard protocols for processes. Thank you again for your time, appreciate all your hard work for our community.
Thank you very much. Anyone else, Jenny? Town managers report, please.
Okay. So I'll start off by just giving you an update. I had the opportunity with a few other town officials to spend the last couple of days at the Mass Municipal Association's annual conference. And a couple of things came out of that I want to share with the board. So first, I want to start off by letting you know that the town Plymouth received the number-one award for the best website, new website in Massachusetts award. That, as you all know, there was a lot of work put into that a year ago, so we were excited to be, I recognized at the opening conference. In addition to that, the governor was present, and she announced a few different things. So we talked a lot about the budget last few weeks here in this room. One of the things that we had talked about was that we weren't aware of what our state aid was going to be. And so Governor Haley announced at this last meeting that there will be an increase of three percent for local state aid, and there'll also be an increase of four percent for the Student Opportunity Act. So we haven't seen the finite numbers just yet, we've only seen the proposed increases, and we expect, let's see, probably tomorrow sometime, we're expecting those numbers to be posted to the DOR website. So we'll keep the board posted on what that three percent and four percent equates to at the local level. So as we mentioned in the past, you know, any new net state aid, we'd be moving that into salary reserve for future negotiations. In addition to that, the governor announced the Municipal Empowerment Act. So I'll share a little bit about what that means, but in particular on the revenue side of the House. So under the bill, communities could, at a local option, increase the local meals tax, which is now point seven-five percent to one percent. So if we chose to, if this, if this act were to pass, we could go to town meeting and seek an additional point twenty-five percent to the local meals tax. In addition to that, we would have the opportunity to increase the local lodging tax to what is now six percent to seven percent. And then in addition to that, if we chose, we could go back to town meeting, seek another local option that would allow us to add an additional surcharge to the motor vehicle access tax of five percent. So as you all know, the motor vehicle access tax was created decades and decades ago, and that money was supposed to be used to put towards roads, and most municipalities put that into the general operating budget. So, you know, that, that will go to the legislature for debate and discussion amongst other things that's in that act, so we'll keep you posted, and assuming some of those opportunities do avail themselves, we'll be having that discussion to see if we want to bring that to a future town meeting. In addition to just talking about budgetary items, both the chairman and the vice chairman and myself, I had the opportunity to meet with the chair and the vice chair and the school superintendent to discuss working more collaboratively on the FYI twenty-five budget. And it appears that the school committee will be voting their budget on Thursday night. I see it's posted. I see that it's also posted and is going to adopting the selectmen's budget that went to the finance committee. So again, good news on that front, that we are going to go as a unified front to town meeting with that budget. It's now up to the finance committee to debate any changes to that, to that budget. And so moving on from that, just a couple of the quick announcements. I know there's been a lot of conversations about some transportation improvement stuff that we've been considering. So the corner of Standish and Liberty, there will be a admin note coming before the board in probably the next few weeks to recommend a four-way stop at that intersection, so you'll be seeing that soon. The intersection at Long Pond Road and Halfway Pond Road, not making a lot of progress on that front, so we're going to have to take matters into our own hands. I'm working with the engineer in the pound right now, so that we can go to the fall town meeting, and what we will be requesting is to seek temporary land takings so that we can go ahead and make those improvements. The abuddhas in that area, the four abuddhas, really do not want to participate in a voluntary land-taking process, so the only way to make those improvements at that intersection is to go through the typical easement-taking process, and we'll, we're planning on doing it in October, so just so you're aware. So the folks that are interested in that intersection, it's going to be a little bit longer because we have to take those properties by eminent domain. In addition to that, the Water Street project continues to move forward. You'll see this week that they've been drilling the dewatering wells, and as of today, they started installing, installing the sheathing. So again, trying to complete that project as quickly as possible as well, still waiting to hear back for the final settlement agreement. And then the last thing I just want to bring to your attention, Joe Young, our IT director, he ran a report on the See Click Fix program that we started a year ago. So in twelve months, we've had nine hundred and twenty-five submissions. It has, it takes an average of eight point five days to resolve a complaint or a concern, and the number-one complaint was potholes at two hundred and thirty-six complaints that were filed during the trauma period, and those take an average of four days to resolve. And then, so I'll leave it at, at that point. The only thing I just wanted to ask the chairman, I attended a meeting a few weeks back with a number of abuddhas to the Eeyore River, we talked about that EE&amp;F project. Apparently, this was a similar project, had taken place back in the nineties, and there was a citizens advisory committee that was created, and they are asking the board if they would consider the board appointing the citizens advisory committee for the EE&amp;F project proposal. So if you so choose, we would then go ahead and advertise that and bring back a number of applicants for the board to appoint. Pending any questions, that's all I have for tonight.
Yeah, I actually spoke with some of the citizens, and if you remember, when they did the presentation, that was my main concern, did they, did they check with the, with the citizens? And, you know, not everybody pays attention to everything until, you know, they see it somewhere.
That's right.
But I don't have an issue, I don't think Kevin, John have a, no. So let's move forward with whatever you need to do with that.
Okay.
Advertise it, and we'll move forward.
So Jenny, we'll go ahead and talk tomorrow about advertising for this panel.
Please. Do you want to say something, John? Pretty much, not, not for the night, but yeah.
So Derek, I, I know it was a team effort, but I'm assuming that Anthony Sinessi was the driver behind the website change? He did the majority of the work?
Yeah, Anthony, who's now, since left us, has, he was, I would say, the architect behind it. You know, a lot of backbone support by our IT department and Joe Young, and then our town clerk, who has experience designing websites as well, so it was certainly a team effort.
Have you told Tony, I, have you told Anthony that he won the award?
He was present with us when we accepted the award.
Okay, fantastic. Could you just review those three things you talked about that still need to go through the budgetary process at the state level?
Yeah, so.
Auto excise tax, meals tax, and the third one?
I'll send the board a.
Hotel motel.
Yeah, I'll send, I'll send the board a full version of it, because there's a lot of items in there that I didn't talk about, like changes, procurement law, things of that nature. But what I mentioned, just because I thought that you were interested in it, is that they're proposing a local option to increase the local meals tax from a point seven-five percent to a one percent. And they are also proposing to increase the lodging tax from six to seven percent, and then an additional surcharge on the vehicle excise tax up to five percent.
Up to five percent, okay. So that all has to go through and get approved by both legislative, you know, the Senate and the House, and obviously get signed off by the governor. So eventually, if they pass, that's something that we need to talk about.
Assuming this passes or some version of it, we would expect to see something probably early summertime.
Yeah, that's good. Thank you.
Okay. On the website, I hate to be dicky down on, but there was a little bit of tripping on Facebook about the website, so I thought I would, you know, reply and, you know, do what I do, even though I know I'm going in a danger territory. Well, I took a beating, because, and I'm just going to put it out there now that we're all talking about it, we got the award. If it's more than three clicks, that seemed to be the theme throughout what I was reading. So I don't know if ours is more than three clicks, or maybe had a bad day, or maybe the guy that was trying to do the click and wasn't clicking right, I don't know. But while we're on the subject, I'm glad that, you know, we did get the award, but I took a pounding. So I'll, I'll share that with you. You know, just some, I mean, some of the things you have to sift through, naturally.
I'm, I'm looking at it right now, and I'm sure there are some items that you may have to click more than three times to find.
Yeah, but I mean, you know, so, was a retired website guy, I guess, that's what he said. Anyway, congratulations, Anthony did do, put a lot of work into that. And you know what? If it needs some improvement, just like everything, we'll have to work on it.
That's right.
The other big one was, you know, nobody answers the phone, but the days of, you know, everybody taking turns in the little town hall, just answering the phone, those days are gone. I mean, with budgets what they are, you know, that seems to be the big, the big subject right now. And I, I just want to touch on that for a minute, because we were at the meeting, and it was very, we were working with, we had a nice discussion with the superintendent and the school committee members that were there. And, you know, I wasn't here for that, so if I could just touch on that, I was away. And, you know, the budget, I'm speaking for me, okay? There's room there to take some out, and, you know, but as we get to. There's room there to take some out, and, you know, but as we get to it, I mean, it's not, you know, it's not sealed and sewn, we don't have all the figures yet, so that's why I've been really just watching, and we put out what we needed, we didn't go extra heavy, and there's a lot of misconception about, you know, overrides and this and that, and what people don't understand is the money that we're actually taxing them on is money we never touched that is available to us. You know, if we were going over a certain amount, then we'd have to go for an override for, you know, for operating, or whatever it might be. But, we're not, we're not near that yet.
Right.
The next couple of years, how did we get here? I'm not going to go into the story again, but it's a long story. It's a very long one, but we all, as a community, knew it was coming and why it came. So, you know, it's easy to point fingers, you heard tonight the town's expanding, I mean, you know, and that's going to bring me to the next thing, Derek, I, I think it wouldn't be a bad thing at department head meetings, if you have time, to run them by there, if, you know, if we cut a million, what's that mean? If we cut two million, what's that mean? And have the department heads, the chiefs, DPW, because, you know, sooner or later, somebody at town meeting is going to say it, I believe, you know, and I just want to have the information ready to what it means. I mean, everybody wants their taxes to go down till you tell them that the fire station were closing two of them out of seven, and then you see how quick that old neighborhood's in here. I mean, it is what it is, it costs what it costs to run this town.
That's right.
It's not like we're putting on seventy-five new jobs, that's for sure, so, you know, in this time yet, so I think everybody's just, you know, so far from, I don't know, I heard you had a, what was it, a colorful meeting last week when I was gone, so, thank you, Mr. Canty, for that.
You're welcome, we missed you.
Yeah, I'm sure. So, that's all I wanted to say on the budget, I know everybody's got their opinion to it, and I'm very aware of the seniors and everybody else that lives in this town, but it, it does cost what it costs to run the community. And can we cut, yeah, we can cut, but how much do you, do you want to give up? And it's like we have a whole bunch of services now, so. And then, I just have a question, like, you touched on the meal tax, and John brought it up too, and the reason I like that tax is a lot of tourists will, if you will, you know, pay that tax rather than every single taxpayer, of course, I go to eat, so. But, will we have the home rule petition, would it be a little different for us or no?
So, right now, for the meals tax, we, as you know, we just amended that home rule petition.
Okay.
And that money, all of that hundred percent of the meals tax goes into this, paying the debt for this building. So, last, was it last year, we were able to expand that, so it goes beyond just town hall, but goes to a lot of other public facilities. So, if we increase that, that would just increase, increase the pull of revenue that we could have to put towards other facilities.
Okay, thank you. And the last thing I have is the Water Street, I was going to ask you about that, because I see some activity there. Did anybody notify the businesses, or what's the schedule, or, you know, what the hopeful start, and will we finish in by June, right? We're out of there hopefully?
So, there was a, there was a public meeting in this room back in November, they said there were about fifteen business owners and property owners that were in attendance, it was well-attended, they're all informed of the schedule, we're staying on that schedule. At the time, we were trying to start in December, we delayed that for a few weeks, and so they just, they, they mobilized on January first, and they just started the, the dewatering wells this past week, and then the she, the sheathing as of today. So, we're on schedule, just to try to get out of there, but no later than June fifteenth is the aim.
That'd be nice. June first would be better, but we'll see what happens, I just hope everything goes good, so, okay. New business? Letters? We got a lot of those. John?
So, Derek, Sunday night, Stop and Shop, I ran into an abutter of Stevens Field, and they were inquiring about a letter that they had got on a zoning board of appeals meeting coming up, a new structure that we're going to have built on Stevens Field, and I was a little caught off guard because I thought it was odd that a five-to-six million dollar project that is already very well under construction, finally, would have to retroactively come back to multiple boards in this community to get approval for said structure. It just seemed odd to me, this letter out to this individual. So, obviously, it's town-owned property, it's a town project, it's being led by a town department head, and I just thought, my assumption was that whatever permission was needed for said structure would have been, would have been secured six to twelve months ago. I mean, now, you know, so I was just wondering...
It's a good question, I'll follow up on that.
If you can get, how, how did that happen if it's true, and it just seemed a little odd to me? And then, the second thing I had was, do we have an update on the, the individual that was potentially going to be hired for staff support for COPC and CPC?
So, interviews were conducted early last week, and a recommendation was made on Friday of last week, and, and offer was made yesterday. So, we have somebody that we made an offer to, and if things go well, we would expect that person to begin in less than two weeks.
Thank you. Anything else on the whole business? Motion?
I'll second the motion to adjourn.
All in favor? unanimous. Thank you for watching, have a good evening and a good rest of your week, and we'll see you next Tuesday. Thanks.